Alright, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. The mayor's running a little bit late, so as soon as she gets here, we'll go ahead and turn it over to her. But we'll go ahead and get started with the housekeeping items, which are, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. So we'll go ahead and get a roll call.
Mayor Anna Emo-Laskis. Mayor Pocan Ben Minnis Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Chavas.
Here.
Councilmember Maria Florito. Councilmember Fernando Cabrera.
Here. Alright, thank you. At this time, the reason we're starting early tonight, we don't have any closed session items, so we're starting fortunately at 6 o'clock, which is a good thing. Now it's time for a public comment. Anybody? Oh, excuse me. I think it's kind of after. But, although we don't have any closed items, closed session items, so there's no public comment on that. There's no items to report from the closed session. Therefore, we'll go ahead and start the pledge of allegiance. And, let's see. Here, welcome to staff, please. And councilmembers, if you can make us in the place. Alright, at this time, I mean, I have to write, so we'll go ahead and turn the room over to the mayor.
Hey, everyone. Particularly, we are in pledge of allegiance. We'll add to, do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda for today? None? Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is public comments. So at this time, any member of our public may address the city council on items not appearing on their agenda, and that are of interest to the public and within the jurisdiction of the city council. We do have a limit of three minutes, so at this time, I'll ask anyone that is here in our chambers if there's any public comments. And we are translating this in Spanish, so este momento también, I see, I comentarios públicos, tenemos tres minutos, el público tiene tres minutos, sí, I comentarios públicos, pero en mi frente.
Good evening, just mayor.
We're gonna get your, um.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rema Lopez. I'm 80 years old. I was born here in Soladec. And my problem is, we came as black people, because they took route Monterey and Mead Street over here. Now, from MST, they took it out, and now we have to go all the way to McDonald or out to the end of this street. And I think it's very bad, it's very rude that they did that without notifying the people. Now we have to be getting up at five or six in the morning when it's cold, to go over there either side, to get our appointments. But we want you guys to understand our problem. It's not only me or them. There are probably people that have wheelchairs, water, tanks, and people can then not even walk that far anymore. We're all old, and we want you guys to respect us like we respect you. So we want you to take this into consideration, because we have to go to the board of supervisors if you guys don't do anything. And that's going to be a dump, a dump on you guys. So figure out this problem that we have. Remember, you're gonna get old also, and you're gonna be needing everything. So we get big lineage, and we take it for granted that we are here representing the city only, and not only the senior citizens, everybody. There are students that are having problems, because they have to have their chairs, lose work, lose time and everything to go take them over there, or over there, or us to Salinas, because they go to Salinas and colleges, schools, whatever they do, that's it. And they use a, they use a transportation also. And this transportation is very, very good for us. As some, because the city gets money from the state. But not the state, I mean, the MST gets money from the state. So talk to whoever is in charge of this MST, and tell them that you guys want to have this deal going on, because Gonzalez and Grinchell and King City, they don't, they didn't do anything. They, they're in the same deal that they have, that we have. So, I don't know about them, if they're gonna talk to, I mean, not to you, to their council or not, that's up to them. But we came here because last Tuesday, because I've been up with a social here in Soladec, and the lady from MST told us to talk to you people before we go up to the board of supervisor, to see what they can do to help us out. So, we're trying to find out why they did this, and why did that person from the council did this? We heard that from somebody, that somebody from the city council voted to take that street out. And that wasn't up here, because they should have notified the people that usually take out.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, thank you for your comments. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Remen, and thank you so much for everything that you do, and all of the seniors that are here as part of, as part of that. So I just want to say, and I'm gonna, I know we don't respond on this, on this item, so I will make sure that I talk to Remen separately. I am the representative of MST, so I am the board chair, and I want to make sure that our community knows that. As part of our JPA, the city is part of that process. And so I just want to make sure that people do understand that I am. So I'm the representative of MST on that charity. And there was a two-year process of the comprehensive analysis that was conducted. So there was notification, there is, there is another, another component to that, which is going to be more, more transit, public transit system within the city. The city, we still have to move forward on that, so that hasn't been taken care of, to make sure that all these other spots, where seniors need to get to, that those are going to be part of a newer system, that is a better system to be able to support our seniors, to be able to get people to, to jobs, to work, to where they need to go. So I just wanted to make sure people were clear on that, and then I will work through the city manager to make sure that we get the names of everybody that's here that has concerns, so I can do a more thorough explanation of the process.
Okay, mi nombre es Madilena Santana. Mi, mi, mi problema no más es quiero, yo saber, yo primero más puro español, ¿verdad?
Sí.
Y quiero preguntarles, con quién me vengo que dirigir para ver quién son los ennegados del panteón. Porque es una vergüenza que soledad al dar de que González tengamos esta panchón tan abonbronado. Yo ahí tengo a mi hermano, si llama Blas Encana, mis tíos, para mí, mi hermano, el padre, Tony, Los Nussi Flores, y muchos amistades. Es una vergüenza que hace dos semanas nos son funeral, y la gente se enterraba en los pozos. Ese panteón está muy olvidado, hay que ponernos a pensar que ahí están nuestros seres queridos, es el lugar más sagrado que tenemos, y la gente de aquí se olvida. Hacen los ceretos, que no para mí lo importante, lo importante es donde están los ennegados de nosotros, nuestra familia. Y yo quisiera ver qué podemos resolver. Viene los tiempos de la calor, va a haber una que no son. En las noches, yo sé que va a personas a hacer party, salir que se vio, pueden levantar un cerillo, ya no nomás en tres días, sino en la noche, hacen party. Es un lugar sagrado, porque ahí están nuestros seres queridos, y ahí vamos a ir todos.
Muchas gracias.
Quisiera que por favor tomara en cuenta esto, sí.
Sí, muchas gracias, gracias. So let me just say that in Spanish, English, for those that are joining us, also via Zoom. Her name is Maria Elena Santana, and obviously, they're a well-known family that's been here many, many years in our community. She's really concerned about the cemetery and some of the issues that many of us have heard already about the cemetery, and some of the potholes, some of the parties that have been going on. She says it's really embarrassing, and it's really hard, because these are places where we have our loved ones, and it's a safer place. So they, they want to know who is, who are those individuals that they need to, to be talking to, and what can we do? So Megan, there is information on that. I was gonna do it on my report. But I know that this is not the time, Mike, so I just want to be clear. I mean, I know we typically don't respond, but we are working on trying to get, trying to resolve some of that issue, those issues, although the city's not, we don't have oversight of the board. But, so I just want to make sure, can I respond? Should I not respond? I know there's protocol, so I just want to be clear. I will announce it in my report, but I don't know if they're here now.
Yeah, I think you probably responded as much as you can under the, the Brown Act provisions, and, and just if you wanted to make sure that you could let the individual who just spoke know that you can provide that information to them separately too, or anybody else that's here that's interested, and make sure to let Darlene know, and then we provide them with that information.
Yes, okay. So, Maria Elena, yo tengo más información, yo sé que me había llamado también, so tengo más información para usted sobre el, el distrito del cementerio, y qué es, lo que se ha hecho, y qué es lo que se puede hacer. So puedo hablar yo con ustedes separado?
Y, y ahí no se hizo nada.
Ya, ya se ha. Ya se.
Y ahí, a lo menos ahí no, pero ya la parada del brazo quitaron.
Sí, y ahí, con eso también voy a hablar con ustedes separado.
Gracias.
Gracias a ustedes. Okay, so we'll talk to, I just want to, just for the public in terms of, because I think all of our council members have probably received comments and concerns in regards to the cemetery district. I also sit on a LAFCO board, not as a voting member, but I am on the board as an alternate. And that LAFCO is the entity through Monterey County, the entity that has oversight of the cemetery district. And we are trying to work with, through the LAFCO, to be able to resolve some of the concerns, and get information on when those public meetings are held, so the public knows who are those board members from the cemetery district. When are those meetings being held? And that way, individuals can come and address some of those concerns that are happening.
So, una de las cosas no más que lo voy a decir en español brevemente, so tenemos muchos de nosotros como concejales hemos recibido comentarios y preocupaciones sobre el cementerio. La agencia que se encarga de eso no es, no es, es, no, nosotros, pero es una agencia de condado de Monterrey que se llama LAFCO. Yo sirvo, yo estoy en esa, en esa mesa, no como, no tengo voto ahí, pero soy una persona alternativa. So ya he hablado con las personas de LAFCO sobre las preocupaciones, y ellos ya han empezado a hablar con, con el, con el, la mesa directiva de ellos, para poder tener más información sobre quiénes son los representantes, cuándo van a ser las juntas, porque todo eso es junta pública, y se tiene que dar información al público, so vamos a hablar, voy a trabajar con el gerente, con la nueva gerente de la ciudad, para poder tener más información, para dejarle saber a ustedes.
Muchas gracias, muchas gracias.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Maria Santana, I'm last name is Juan, and I wanna know, Juan, do we have to ask permission to a city to go and put something in the plot where my husband is, my husband used to play soccer a long time ago. He worked a lot with the police department and with there was a, a program that was named, it was something that had to do with the kids playing soccer. Anyway, the reason that I'm here, and I'm asking Juan, do we have to ask permission, the city, to put something? A couple of months ago, my son came down to take the soccer ball from the grave, to rebuild it, you know, and get it painted and all that. When he came, he comes all the way from Bakersville to put that thing back in place, and they told him that he couldn't do it. That he had to write a letter to the city and get permission to do it. And I wanna know, Juan.
Maria, is, is it in the cemetery?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, so we'll get that information. I don't, we'll get that information to be able to clarify what, what is it that they need from the city.
Yeah, because if we want to put something in there, you know, that's how it's already paid for, you know? And if you wanna put like a dollar or something, Juan, we have to ask permission to do it.
Yeah, so let's make sure that Darlene has your contact information, so that we can call you and figure out what is it that they're asking.
Because that was very, you know, that's very upsetting to me, because if I want to go and fix the, you know, the platform my husband is, and I cannot do it, not even water, because the faucets are closed, and we have to carry water from our house to go and clean the pot, I don't think that's fair.
Yeah, no, thank you, and I want to make sure I speak too, because we only have three minutes per person. So yeah, thank you, we'll get your information, and then we'll make sure that we find out what they're asking for. Okay, yeah, thank you so much. Okay, any more public comments from those that are joining us here in the chambers, before I take it out to the, to those that are joining us via Zoom? Okay, then let me take it out to those that are joining us via Zoom. If there's any public comments.
Sure.
Well, is there one more? Oh, okay.
Me llamo Yerika Mercolado, y vivo aquí en Soladec por muchos años. Y la única, la única vez que siempre no me paro a las juntas del concilio, porque pienso que todo está bien. Pero ahora vengo a dar una queja, porque la señora Corralejo nos ha quitado que paren los bases donde siempre se han parado. Por qué razón? Este, hay muchas personas que son mayores, y tienen que andar hasta la, hasta la, hasta la leza, o al mesgano. No creo que es posible. Y, y yo deseo que sigan los bases parándose donde mismo, porque no, él llega pronto. Ya tiene tiempo. Y por qué nos están haciendo eso? Es, la señora Corralejo está ayudando por los negocios, o por las comunidades que necesitamos ayuda? Eso es todo, mi programa. Gracias.
Gracias, revista, pero quiero clarificar, so, la concejal Corralejo no es la, la que está en la mesa directiva de MST, soy yo. Yo soy la chair de la mesa directiva de MST, y so voy a hablar con ustedes separados, porque las intenciones de si se quitó ese pasta, como dije anteriormente, voy a hablar con ustedes, porque no, no es para, no es algo para dañarlos a ustedes. Hay un sistema que va a operar que es más mejor, y estamos todavía, tenemos que hablar con las personas de la ciudad, porque tenemos que asegurar que ese programa, ya empezamos a implementar en otros lugares, pero en soledad todavía no. Pero gracias, yo hablo con ustedes después para explicarles.
Gracias.
Ya, gracias.
Okay, and just one more call out to see if there's any additional comments from those that are joining us here, public comments, at this time, from those that are joining us here in the chambers. Okay, no más comentarios públicos. Okay, then I'm gonna take it out now to those that are joining us via Zoom.
I have one, Isabel.
Okay, Isabel, go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name is Isabel Mesa. I'm here as the part of the Measure S committee, and I just wanted to quickly inform the council that the Measure S committee did meet last week, and unfortunately, we were not able to establish a quorum again. I, I am requesting the council, if possible, if they can call a special meeting on behalf of the Measure S committee, because we couldn't, we don't have a quorum, and hopes that maybe other members of the Measure S committee can finally join. And then just want to give a quick shout out to Darlene and Jessica Potts for constantly reminding us all week, sending updates and notifying us of the meeting. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you, Isabel, for those comments. And Megan, we can discuss that also, what is the process for that to happen? Because I know that that's going to be really imperative for the council to get those recommendations. Okay, any additional public comments at this time from those that are joining us virtually? No? Okay, so at this time, I will close up public comment. Thank you, everybody, for, for public comments. This is an opportunity that we have for the council to hear from our residents, so I really appreciate everyone that was here.
Muchas gracias por todos los que vinieron a dar comentario público. Es importante para nosotros como el Consilio escuchar de ustedes, nuestra comunidad. So les doy muchas gracias por venir y compartir con nosotros sus preocupaciones. Gracias.
Okay, so at this time, then we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the youth council report.
And break up, break, 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 before that, and just, just for the everybody that's in the public. So we didn't, we usually don't answer back to any public comment, but we do give direction to staff to take a look at it, and that's why we're getting your, your contact information, so that staff can look into it, or in this case, also the mayor can talk to you about the issues. So no más, brevemente, regularmente, el consilio no habla para atrás al público cuando tienen preguntas o tienen comentarios, pero sí vamos a dirigir a nuestros trabajadores aquí de la ciudad, o en este caso, la alcaldesa, que va a hablar con ustedes sobre sus pasos. Okay, gracias.
Muchas gracias por todo, y yo haré que si no pongan atención, porque no porque nos vean viejitas, no lo hagan.
Good night, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, and that's why I wanted to make sure I clarify at the beginning whether we can comment or not, because typically, some of the comments are not for us to comment, but those are really important issues that are happening.
Mayor, before we get started today, real quick, I wanted to thank the G R O T C for showing up today to present the color. My apologies, I moved forward without allowing you to do so, my error, and I appreciate you guys, and we all appreciate you being here to do that as well. So thank you so very much, and again, my sincere apologies.
Okay, so we'll move on now to our youth council report. So do we have Angelina or Liliana with us? Okay. So we will move on. I know the report was in the, we all have it. Okay, so we'll move on now to our next item and it's council presentation. So at this time we have four council, actually council presentations. We want to make sure that we do our appreciation. So I'll begin with presentation number one. And this is
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was mistaken. There is three presentations that the swim team will be here today. So items two, three and four won't be moving forward. So I apologize for the interruption.
Okay, thank you for that. So we look forward to hopefully having them at the next council meeting. Okay, perfect. So we will then move on with our resolution number fifty-nine forty. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Saladin expressing appreciation to Mr. Jay Edward Twees, who served as our interim city manager. While we did the recruitment for our new city manager, and this is, you know, we want to welcome now Megan Hunter, who's her first meeting today, which is really exciting. But we also want to take the opportunity, then I don't know if Ed was going to join us via Zoom. He's not. Okay, okay. Well, we want to make sure that we do send our appreciation to him. And I do want to read a few of these word adds, because I think he came in at a time that was really challenging. And then helped us through a time that was also really challenging with a lot of the storm impacts that our city, you know, that our state and some of our other local jurisdictions have really severe impacts. So whereas in December of 2022, Saladin City Manager Brent Slama departed from the City of Saladin after ten years of service. And whereas the city had an immediate need to temporarily fill the city manager's position, while recruitment efforts for a new city manager progressed. And after considering its options, a council appointed Calpers Anuiten, Jay Edward Twees, Ed, become Ed, as interim city manager on January eleventh of 2023. And whereas Ed, with decades of regular and interim city manager experience, has done an outstanding job during his time as an interim city manager, going beyond oversight of the city's day-to-day operation by addressing a wide range of city issues relating to departmental operations and procedures, clarifying the status of ongoing significant projects, representing the city at numerous meetings with developers, consultants, and members of the public, and overseeing and running the city council meetings. Whereas in addition to the foregoing Ed's competent and imperturbable demeanor, served the city well in responding to a number of matters during his service as interim city manager, including, but not limited to overseeing complications and additional demands involved in the process related to the city's conversion to the bi-district voting, hands-on guidance of the city's response to the winter storms, and represented significant potential dangers and challenges to Saladin and other cities throughout the state of California, and coordination of successful post-storm debris remediation with the county property owners and our unhoused community members. So we just want to express our gratitude. I know that he's not here. But just to have the opportunity for the council to really ensure that we acknowledge him. He came in with a lot of expertise and experience and he didn't help us through this process. So we really just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you. And with that, I will open it up with the council, for the council if there's any comments.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and comment here. Yeah, again, like I said, for his time of that he was here and covered us and our operation continued to run. And as a result, we ran into a couple of crises with the flooding and those type of things that he was able to lead the ship through. And although we have outstanding directors who most likely, you know, then went to took charge, but he was the one ultimately that the council went to to talk to and look for guidance and look to see what was going on out there. And he was keeping us informed. So I do really appreciate his time that he was here and also to help the city solve their experience that he had previously. Thanks, Ed.
Yeah, thank you, Ed.
Yes, likewise, I would also just like to thank Ed for the time that he was here and I would spend it a little bit more than what we initially anticipated. We appreciate that he was there for our staff and for our city and for us as well. And again, just wish him a good retirement again. And thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, same. I don't have a whole lot different to say. I think that he kept us going afloat. We were able to continue on and do the day-to-day. And I think staff did a wonderful job of doing what they normally do, which is always picking up the pieces and understand that they're moving forward this city. And so I believe that our staff is wonderful. And I think that under his just making sure that everything was in place, I think he did a wonderful job in what he needed to do to make sure that we moved forward. We continue with our great projects that we have. And so I just want to thank Ed for that. And that's about it.
Yeah. Just want to thank Ed. And I think that for me at least, it was an experience, a good experience to have him as city manager, because I mean, I'm not here, I've been here for long not to know what role of the three managers is. And I can, I can participate in that. It gave you an idea of what to expect from the city managers. I think you're going to be good in the role. So thank you for all the information on that, on the guidance that you provided across it.
Yeah. So Ed, wherever you are, I know you're having fun. But anyways, we wanted to make sure that we took this opportunity to congratulate you and to thank you, or congratulate you, to thank you first of all for helping us and supporting us through this time. And so we wish you well. And we wish you much rest and peace and to continue your retirement. So thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to our next item on our presentations, and that's a certificate of achievement. And I think this is a really fun one for us and really happy to be able to present this. And this is going to be presented to the NJROTC, I'll say the Navy Junior Reserve Officer Training Works of Saladin High School. And this is a pretty amazing opportunity for the council to be able, again, to congratulate all of you, our cadets. Just amazing work that you do, amazing discipline and commitment that you have. And so on behalf of the City of Sal, the Saladin City Council, congratulations on receiving the Navy's Distinguished Unit Award with honors for the sixth consecutive year and leading high school, Saladin High School NJROTC Program to distinguish itself as one of the best programs in the nation, receiving numerous awards and recognition. Your commitment to excellence, dedication, outstanding community service is admirable and commendable. The City of Saladin is honored to recognize the Saladin High School NJROTC as our role models and Saladin superstars. So let's give them a So we'll present this. We'll have an opportunity to make sure that we have a few words if any of the cadets and also nor captain's not here today, but yeah, to say a few words. I mean, this is amazing. This is like the sixth year in a row. And every time you guys go and compete. I mean, I know I was talking to some of you last week and just amazing experience that you had in Florida and just what you bring back in your commitment, you know, to be able to have the dedication and the discipline is just really outstanding. And we're so proud of you. So I'm going to leave it open. Any of the council want to make any comments? And then we want to make sure that we hear some comments from some of you and then that we take, have an opportunity to take a photo. So I'll open it up to the council.
I would like to say something that, you know, had the opportunity to work with many of you and see your work at our 9/11 ceremony, what that we did at the high school. And also, you know, we have worked in a lot of different events that we have done. I have the, you know, the pleasure of seeing you guys and just honestly the discipline that you guys have, honestly, is amazing. And I think the sacrifice, I know you go to, you know, wake up early, you go to score early, even earlier than the start time. And, you know, it is a big deal and always at the six year in a row that you guys win. But it's also, as I'm sure you're aware, the highest recognition that there is, you know, for this. So just want to thank you guys and say that, you know, you're really an inspiration. And you should all be proud. I know that we are out here. So thank you and congratulations.
Yeah, again, I want to thank you as well. You make us proud. You are Saladin kids. You're our kids. And so the things that we do up here to serve this community is some of the foundation that's being laid with you with the discipline, the structure, working together as a unit to do positive things. And these six years in a row, that's pretty amazing. It is amazing. So don't take it lightly. You guys done an excellent job and we're extremely proud of you. So congratulations.
Just really quickly, through the chair, for me, I think it's even beyond just what you're able to do at this competition. I think you guys show and demonstrate the youth that have been involved in this, that are becoming young adults. All of you that participate over the years that have participated, continue with that, that discipline shows a lot of the leadership abilities of yourselves and the folks that are helping to lead this group. Because it's not just this competition, but it's at the memorial service, at the veteran service. It's at the different functions that happen here in our community. You're always there participating. And so I think that commitment and that dedication to yourselves, to your families and to the community is what you show and demonstrate in a competition like that. So thank you guys for being a part of Saladin.
I want to thank you guys for all you guys do and also your parents for raising you in that way. I know that you guys get different or used to discipline at the program. But really, the hard that you guys put into comes from your families. And I want you to be proud, because we are proud of you guys. It's not just the recognition in paper, it's a recognition from the heart, because we feel really proud of you guys and your family. My wife is an Army veteran and I have many, many friends that are Navy and Marine veterans. And I can see in their, through their actions, how important this discipline is for them. And I assume that some of you will eventually go to one of these armed forces. If you do. Let me tell you that we are proud of you all. Thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, again, thank you so much. And as was said, it's not just the things that you guys do here, right? And I want to thank you guys, because I know the last two years, I think it's been the last two years. You guys have been here on the first, you know, the first council meeting on Wednesdays. And that was such an amazing addition to have you guys here represent our community, represent our families as part of the color guard. So I think that just, you know, it's important to be able to, that you guys know how important it is that for us to have you here. And so I think the other thing for me is the public service for many of you, you participated in the community cleanups. You walk the streets, you've talked to people, you've been out there and, you know, year after year. So I'm just really excited. I know for many of you, I mean, I saw you, some of you guys, since you guys were babies. And now you guys are just really amazing young adults. So it's a pleasure to be able to present this. So I will open it up now. I don't know if she's done. You want to say a few words?
I'm just part of the future. I'm just part, be part of it.
Do we have any of the cadets that have, that want to say any few remarks? I know you guys are a shot.
Well, we can select one. There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, I guess just to add to what all of you said, thank you first of all for giving us this recognition. But secondly, I personally want to thank all of you guys, because this couldn't have happened without any of you. So they're my main supporters. And I couldn't be more grateful to have all these people by my side to have this amazing award. And I hope that they carry it out for the next few years.
I know. I know. And you're a senior this year, Arsa. Thank you. So we'll pause for a few minutes so we can take a photo. I think that's our last certificate, I mean, our last presentation for today. Yeah, okay. So we'll pause for a minute. Thank you for your patience and flexibility. And we celebrated our NJROTC cadet. So I'm super excited and proud of them. So we'll move on now to our next item, but I'm going to go back, because we do have our Youth Council members that arrived and want to make sure that we give them the opportunity to provide a report at this time. I know there was a little difference for today, since the meeting usually starts at six thirty. But because we didn't have closed session, we started the meeting at six. So I want to apologize in advance to our council, our Youth Council for not being clear that we're going to start at six. So thank you. So if you want to come up to the podium. So we have Angelina Flores, and Liliana Negrete with us.
Good evening, council. My name is Angela Flores. I'm the Saladin Youth Council Mayor for it. The Saladin Youth Council is excited for the month of May. Throughout this month, we are diligently working with educational partners to increase survey completion and strategic planning for the new reform. May is a time to recognize the incredible efforts of May is a time to recognize the incredible efforts of our S Y C members. As you have three active and engaged senior members, so we can instrumental throughout the year. We cannot wait and end of your gatherings to organize these efforts and start the selection process for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four S Y C qualifier. For this, for this month's S Y C initiative, you're actively planning the youth physical status community forum. Specifically, the acceptable status survey has been released and you currently have one hundred submitted responses. We're aiming to get an additional one hundred and twelve months in the next week. You're contacting specific youth organizations that serve Solid Ed students. Proceeding programming around recreational, digital and visual visual arts along with college and career. He thinks it's important for us to get their input and experiences. As you receive the results, the youth council will meet this month, this month, and plan the youth physical status forum. We look forward to sharing a specific day on the mission soon. During the coming weeks, our S Y C members will be analyzing the data and generate generating themes and presentations that will be showcased showcased during the event. Um, along with this may highlight, we have the gun prevention initiative in which we will continue to work with our mayor on the planning of a town hall related to gun violence prevention. We look forward to updating you and we appreciate the opportunity to work with Main Street Middle School students on this event. We also have the Gonzalez Youth Council partnership in which we are organizing a meeting with the Gonzalez Youth Council, support their mental health initiative. They hope to learn from our model and implement it in their community. Lastly, we also have the S Y C newsletter. Our members are working to develop the next issue of our newsletter, which we anticipate we release this month. For those interested in joining our mailing list, you can find a link to join on our social media. As for some upcoming events, we recently had um, our S Y C meeting on the fifteenth and we'll have one again on the twenty ninth of this month. Um, we will be trying for the community forum. And to conclude, um, as commissioners, we're really proud of all the accomplishments the S Y C has completed this year. And as the academic year closes, we hope to end it with a strong impact. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. It's pretty amazing that you guys have four hundred responses already. That's pretty awesome. I'm looking for more. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any questions?
Yeah, it's awesome.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on. We'll move on to our close session. We'll move on to our consent calendar. And so today we have four items on content calendar, C one to C four. Uh, and at this time, are there any members of the public that wish to pull an item from the content calendar for question or comment? I see none here. Do we have any that are joining us via Zoom? Okay, and I see none. Okay. Um, I'd like to pull just for comment, I do want to pull um, item C dash three and sorry, C dash two and C dash three. And if there is no other council members that want to pull any items, then I will entertain a motion to approve items C one and C four.
So, second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. So I'll start with item C dash two and it's just a comment on that one. So, um, I know this is, uh, in looking at some of the warrants, I did see that there was uh, already an allocation and I, this was part of the um, the ARCA dollars, the ten thousand that went to the weight room for our um, for our wrestling team? No, the football, sorry, to the football team. So just wanted to make sure, I I don't know if the the room already has been completed, the weight room renovation. But I think it'd be great if we, the council can be invited if there's anything that's going to be done. So that way we can see some of those um, renovation items as part of the the federal dollars that were provided to the school district. And item C um, dash three, uh, which is the temporary use of lanternet for the um, Salinas Crusaders Car Club along the Solid Ed Police Department. I just had a couple of comments on that one. I know as we're inviting people, I really want, would like to see um, us uh, invite our partners that we have a different uh, JPAs or uh, different um, you know, that we're working with, a different partnership. So if we can uh, make sure that we have Pinnacle's National Park, if we can invite them to come and be part of the festivities or set up a booth. Also, obviously MST um, is really critical, uh, so that they obviously need to be out here as well. So one of the things that I would like for them to request, I know that there's a big push on transmission on uh, transitioning to zero emission buses. So if we can have one of those zero emission buses come out here too, that would be really, really great. And then I know we also have the V C E, which we're a partner, a JP, we're as part of that eight J P A. So if we can also invite them to come. I think G and E was already invited last year. Tri-Cities, I don't know if Tri-Cities comes and they put a booth, but I think that's that's important. Um, and then any of our local uh, city businesses and local micro businesses that have a like a business license, I know that they're trying to figure out what kind of booths we have. But I think this is a great opportunity for us to really showcase a lot of those micro businesses that we have locally um, to be able to support them as well. And then just a correction in the language in the exhibit A, it says Solid Ed yesterday, so it should be revised to the um, the car club. And then my last um, item on that, I know last time, last uh, year, the council had a role, we selected like our different vehicles. But if we can just have a more, uh, I don't know if we had an agenda, but just this is a time that this is going to take place so that way of the council, we know like what time is uh, what time are some of those items that we were involved in um, are going to take place. If we have to do this elections, which I thought was really awesome, but just making sure that we're, we have that information in advance. And those are all my comments. So I will make a motion to approve item C dash two and C dash three.
Um, further care. Um, regarding item C three, I just wanted to ask Mike, um, my family and I are both on the committee for the Solid Ed Hot Summer Days as we have been for the last two, two years since our second year since it started. I was not on the council uh, last year, um, but I am, I am now. So uh, we really don't receive any, you know, financial contribution or or discounts at all. On the contrary, we actually donated cash, we donate our time. Um, so I just wanted to know if uh, it was necessary for me to recuse myself from, from voting?
Hmm, I I think that you uh, may want to look into uh, materials that are distributed uh, on this particular matter. Um, but other than that, there's no need for you to recuse yourself from participating.
I believe our our logo is on the uh, on the flyers because you know, we are one of the initial um, organizers on the committee and we go to all the meetings.
Okay, so you probably have two choices then at this point. You can either recuse yourself if your um, logo is going to continue to be on the materials that are distributed or you can ask that the materials be removed from the uh, that your logo be removed from the materials.
Okay, um, yeah, I'll just uh, I'll just choose to to give my vote then. Thank you. Okay, so then, um.
And and usually when you recuse yourself, you have to leave the uh, step down from the back, right? Right, no. It's a quick walk, right?
Yeah. Okay, council, then I, there's a motion on the floor on item.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a um, a person, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Okay, so we can ask Maria to come back so we can move on to our next item of business.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to have to get some sort of like ever that you just watch so far and then go back.
You're going to say, so, but should be late.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, if you're in Salinas, you could get one. They're in every corner.
Okay, so um, we'll go ahead and move on then to item B dash one, and this is resolution number five nine four one. Consider adoption of a resolution of the City Council, the City of Solid Ed, establishing an advisory committee, districting committee. Advisory Community Districting Committee. And I will turn this over to Mike.
Sure.
Into our city attorney.
So as the council is aware, uh, the council had previously expressed a desire to uh, and intent to form an advisory community districting committee to provide a another perspective, another uh, sort of grouping of input on the uh, the proposed districting maps for uh, council consideration. And on March fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three, the council did form that committee and each one of the council members appointed a uh, individual to the committee. Um, thereafter, staff um, went about uh, setting the schedule for the meetings and organizing that, which is often somewhat difficult. Um, and then on May eleventh, because I believe last Thursday, the city for the first time was advised by its consultant that there were some um, procedures that are unique to these types of districting committees, different than what we usually have for when we establish our own committees and so forth. And that the elections codes require um, a resolution that memorializes the fact that we have established the uh, committee. And that there are also some um, requirements that are built in, some prohibitions that are built into the code with respect to the actual makeup of the uh, the committee itself. So it seems that those are primarily targeted at having a relationship with some member of the city council and so forth. So um, if you were on a paid member of the unelected officials campaign committee or something along those lines, you could not be appointed. And there's a spousal um, also prohibition and so forth. So um, what we have prepared for you is a resolution that once again restates the uh, the council's desire to form the advisory committee. Uh, it also includes the mission statement of the committee and it will confirm the council committee appointments. Um, I believe that all the council committee appointments uh, that were made last summer fine, with the exception of one and the mayor needs to make a new appointment to the committee that can be then memorialized on the resolution prior to the time that it's adopted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for that clarification. So I just want to make sure that I make a statement too on that. Um, because I believe that there was a discussion and I just, I have to go back and look at the dates in terms of uh, we obviously want to be transparent and any of those committees, uh, members that we appoint, we want to make sure that we're not conflicting with any codes or that we're not in violation in any of the regulatory provisions. Um, so I think for me, it's always really important to be able to look at that. So I think there was a discussion about whether that, you know, so um, the the person that I had appointed, Monica Andrade um, is the spouse of of our council member Fernando Cabrera. And so there was some, um, that that's the issue today is that because of the code, of the election code, then we have to, I have to make a different appointment. But I think I believe that there was conversations about, could this person be appointed? Um, and I thought if they could, so I just want to make sure that's clear, Mike, as well. Because I want to make sure that I'm transparent in terms of, obviously, you know, I I'm really, you know, adamant about adhering to any of the codes and provisions so that it wasn't done in any intentional manner and that it's transparent to our public.
Right.
For me, my concern is the public.
Right. And so um, the this same individual, Monica, I I guess I can use her first name, although she may not approve of that. But in any point, uh, in any regard, um, she uh, has been a volunteer in a variety of activities in the city throughout the years and so forth. Um, and and in fact, the the, we did a check as to whether or not there was a prohibition to her be appointed to the GPAC, which she serves on. And there is no prohibition to that. This particular prohibition, this spousal prohibition is unique to this type of districting committee. And we were unaware of it at the time that we uh, um, the appointments were made. She had previously been cleared for uh, appointment on other types of committees. And so that's why the issue did not arise until it was brought forward uh, by our consultant after the appointment had already been made. And I want to stress again, the fact that this has nothing to do with the substantive qualifications of the individual involved. This is an individual who served the community well for a number of years in a variety of forums and so forth. It's just that because there is a specific rule in the elections code that says that um, spouses cannot be appointed to these types of advisory committees. That's why the uh, the new appointment needs to be made. We uh, one of the other things I talked about with Texas is obviously Monica is invited to any of these public meetings that uh, will be scheduled. And we're going to put her on the mailing list so that she can continue to participate since she had previously expressed an interest in and have been appointed to participate and so forth. So I think that the first meeting um, for the uh, advisory committee has been scheduled for the twenty-fifth, correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah. So so next uh, Thursday, so. There's not any other questions? The staff recommendation is that we go ahead and mayor, have you um, first uh, announce who your appointment would be? Um, and then have the council consider adoption of resolution fifty-four, or I'm sorry, fifty-nine forty-one.
Yeah, so let me open it up for questions from the council and then I'll take it up for any uh, questions from the public as well.
Okay, so I read the uh, that code that uh, you sent us. And I was wondering if that is the only code that was applied and if you check on the rest of the uh, members of the creed.
Yeah, we did check the whether or not the, there's no other spouses that are involved, there's no paid campaign uh, officials and so forth. So there is no prohibition to the other four.
Okay, because uh, California elections uh, in the chapter nine advisory and independent districting committee in uh, twenty-three zero zero three C, it states that a person should not be appointed to serve on that commission if that person or any family member of the person has been elected or appointed to or being candidate for an if an elected office of the local jurisdiction in eight years. And I believe that one uh, one, one other member of the committee has been a mayor and a candidate.
Okay, so so that code section that you're referring to is uh, applies to different type of committee than than what we you are forming. That is, it has to do with hybrid districting committees and they have much more authority than the advisory committee. Uh, the elections code section two three zero zero two is the section that applies to advisory redistricting uh, commissions. It's what they call them, we call it a committee. And the relevant section there says, a person who is an elected official of the local jurisdiction or a family member, staff member, or paid campaign staff of an elected official for the local jurisdiction shall not be appointed. That is the section that is relevant to the appointments that were made to this advisory committee.
So even those as chapter nine advisory and independent redistricting commissions?
Those are different types of commissions than the advisory commission that you have before you today.
So, like, Fernando, if I can follow up on that. So on the, so elected official or the planning commissioners, elected officials? We appoint them, but they're not. So they're not considered, they're just appointed.
So and so just just for clarification, so the other two types, there are three types of committees that can be formed um, for advisory purposes, but of the peer advisory redistricting commission, which is what you have. They're not making any decisions. The only thing that they will do is to make a recommendation to the city council of which one of the maps they think is the preferred map, or they can even prepare their own map that they would then ask you guys to consider it by way of recommendation. That is subject to this elections code section two three zero zero two. The other types of uh, committees slash commissions actually have some decision-making authority. And that's not what is being formed here. That wasn't what your intent was either, it was just for advisory purposes, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I I guess for me, it's just making sure that we should have had some of this information in in the past, right? Understanding what type of committee and what committees were subject to what rules under the election and code. Because I know obviously there is multiple codes and provisions and just being clear, this is, you know, obviously this is a process we're undertaking and we hadn't undertaken it in the past. And just making sure that any appointees, um, you know, there wasn't any conflicts under the election codes. So I think for me, I mean, just hindsight, right? It would have been, it would have been great to have more details on that. Okay, so let me, um, any, any additional question from the council before I take it out to the public? Okay, then at this time, I will take it out to any members of the public that are here with us on the council chambers. And then I'll take it out to those that are joining us via Zoom. So on item B dash one, any comments? From the public?
I have this one about when we disagree.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, good evening, uh, Mayor Velazquez and council members. I just wanted to, you know, express my sadness of moving this far away. Um, but I will continue to be a strong advocate on this issue because I know, for a fact, I've been following on this um, on this issue long before my husband Fernando Cabrera ran for office. Um, and I do have other concerns though. There may not be um, I guess, code code, uh, elections code, but they could certainly be concerning nonetheless. Uh, Mr. Ledesma did financially contribute to the person who appointed him. And he does hold his license with, wheelchair license with this person too, with his pro, um, his business. And I, I do question, you know, whether that can be considered a conflict of interest. And just, you know, would like further clarification for the public to know if this is um, unethical, but maybe um, And just, you know, we'd like further clarification for the public to know if this is unethical, but maybe in part with the election code. Thank you and good night.
Yeah, thank you for the comment. Any, any other comments on this item? Okay, so let me take it out to the public. Any other comments from the public on this item? I see, I have a hand raised. Yes. So Lupita, you have your hand raised. You can unmute yourself.
Hi, hello, everyone. My name is Lupita Royo. I'm a longtime resident of Salinas, I'm sorry, of Solidad. I'm just a little confused about the, the committees and how they are like appointed. So how, how does this rule not apply? And this question is specifically for Mike. How does this rule not apply to the, the appointed committee? So I'm just a little confused and would like a little bit more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Lupita. So, so Mike on the NDC, I know NDC is not here with us, but just maybe clarification. So we know also in terms of the, here's a specific election code. Here's what it states in terms of this specific committee. I know you mentioned three different committees, but we're under this committee and what's applicable under that committee, just so that way there could be clarity.
Right, so the, there are a variety of different committees or commissions that can be formed by the city to provide different services with respect to the districting process. And the, the qualifications and requirements for appointments are set forth in different sections of the elections code. So section two-three-zero-zero-two is the section that applies to advisory redistricting commissions, which is what the city council is forming. So that particular section has the language that I already read into the record and that prohibits spouses and so forth. It does not include the language that was referenced by council member. Sorry, Fernando Cabrera, which was two-three-zero-zero-three. That section applies to a different type of advisory commission. So the only provision that applies to the qualifications for service on this particular committee is set forth in elections code two-three-zero-zero-two, which prohibits spouses, but does not include that, that eight-year language that was referenced. That applies to a different type of commission that actually has some decision-making authority. This is purely an advisory committee that you're forming, just to make a recommendation to you. The other boards have stricter standards because they have more rights, more obligations and more authority to do different sorts of things with respect to the districting process.
Yeah, thank you for providing that explanation, Mike. And again, I guess for me, just hindsight, right? Would have been nice to be able to say, hey, these offices have distinction. So that way, as we're making appointments, there was no issue with conflict of interest. Or I think for me is at this point, I know the commission hasn't met or the advisory committee, but just, you know, making sure we don't have these, we're not placed in these predicaments.
Yeah, I mean, I will just reference that NDC was involved and was aware of the fact that we were forming this committee. NDC reviewed and prepared agendas for the first two meetings that we were having. But NDC never mentioned that there were these particular code provisions that we needed to comply with. And so we complied with the, you know, the standard process procedure that we have for establishing committees, you know, other types of committee, GPAC, so forth and so on. And so, like I said, we were not made aware of these specific requirements in the elections codes until last Thursday, so.
Through the chair, but shouldn't we have knowledge of those requirements prior to creating a committee? Because I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to feel like in the process, in the years to come, the months to come, they're going to be forming committees and stuff. And then we're going to wait until a month or two that people are meeting and saying, oh, by the way, there is a provision in the code that you cannot be part of that, of that committee. So is it important that, it's important that we know what are the provisions before we actually form a committee or recommend people for that committee?
Right.
Because I don't want to be waiting for somebody else to tell me, oh, by the way, you cannot, you don't qualify.
Yep, no, totally understand. I will say that, you know, in thirty years of service here, this is the first time we've ever had something like this occur where somebody was appointed to a committee or committee was formed that required us to backtrack and so forth. And as far as I know, this is the first time that we've run into statutory provisions that apply to the formation of the committee. All the other committees that we formed, so forth, are either creatures of statute that we are aware of and that we follow or that are set forth in the city council rules and regulations or that you have some freedom. So for instance, the GPAC is not a creature of statute. And we came up with our own process and procedures for making the appointments to that particular committee. So yes, it's always advisable to know beforehand. In this case, we just didn't have any reason to believe that this was any different than any of the other committees that we've ever formed. We only found, we only found out about that after the fact. And we're correcting it before. It would, it would have been problematic if the committee had met and had started to take, conduct business and so forth. So at least we were able to catch it before the committee did any, provided any recommendations, so. It's unfortunate, I recognize it, it's unfortunate. And, you know, I want to assure everybody it wasn't meant to embarrass either the person who was appointed and then now has been removed and so forth. It's just one of those things that happened and we took the appropriate action to correct it as quickly as we could.
Thank you for that, Mike. I think for me, either, and I, you know, apologize if I said her name and, you know, but I think like was mentioned, right? I mean, transparency is important and making sure that people understand what the dialogue is, what transpired. And thank you for stating that it's a statutory provision that works really different than some of the other committees that we have. So moving forward, we'll be very diligent, asking questions to make sure that we don't get caught in these circumstances in the future. But with that, if there is no, no more comments?
One more comment to share is, just, just for clarification and so that I understand correctly. So that perception of conflict of interest doesn't exist when there is a a perceived employer-employee relationship between the, the person who appoints and the appointee?
The, the only language that controls who can or cannot be appointed is set forth in that section twenty-three zero zero-two.
I understand that. What I'm asking is different. I'm asking if, if the perception of is that, is not, is not in this case.
Perception is not law. Perception is not law, right, so.
So in other cases, if, if there is no law that describes that, can I appoint my wife directly?
Could you appoint your wife directly?
If it is not law that prohibits.
I guess it would depend on the committee actually that we were talking about, right?
Because I remember asking when we were forming this committee, I, I remember clearly asking Ed. And that's, that's, that's what I said. Can I appoint my wife? And he said, it's not illegal, but it is, I don't remember whether he said. But I want to make sure that, that what we do or what I do is within the law and within the written law. And that it is not, is not prohibiting me from doing something because is the, the perception of conflict of interest is there. I want to make sure that it's not, because it is not law. And I will be careful saying that because then, as long as there is no law written there, the perception of conflict of interest, if it existed in the cases, then somebody can come back and quote and say, our city attorney said that while there is no law, perception of conflict of interest has no impact in that.
Well, perception of a conflict is going to be a personal decision on your part. It's not, it's, it's not anything that I can provide you advice. I can tell you that the perception may be that there is a conflict and so that that will be your choice or an appointment could be clouded by the public's perception of you appointing a family member, a business partner, something along those lines, right, to a committee and so forth. But perception is not the law and it's up to you as an individual, whether or not you want to continue to make that appointment and have that perception in the community. It's up to you, though. It's an individual choice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so thank you for that. And we're going to move on, but I just wanted to.
Really quickly through the chair. And so just to be clear, as far as my appointment with Mr. Ledesma, he is not a broker, he's a realtor, just as I am. He's not a broker for the brokerage firm, so. I am a contracted individual with a license that's hung at the same place where his license is hung. He is not a broker, so there's, he's not an employer in any capacity, so I just want to be clear with that. When I do that.
So, so let me just, thank you for that. So let me just say too, even though I just want to comment on the perception of law. As council members, we all have to take training. We all take ethics training every two years. And the ethics training is to really make sure that we as public servants understand that even though it may not be law, I mean, some stuff is statutory and I get it, but I think we also have to make that determination because maybe it may be legal. But if the perception is that people are going to think that there's patriotism or that, you know, there is other kinds of conflicts through the public's eye, we as individuals have those ethic and morals that we need to decide on our own. You know, it may be, it may be legal, but is it the right thing to do? And I just want the public to understand that, that for us as elected officials, we have that, we have, you know, that obligation to the public, whether it's law or not, to make sure that there isn't a perception either in terms of some of our ethics trainings that we take. And that's our decision whether we say, hey, who cares? Or you know what, the perception is greater than what's on, on, whether it be law or not, that I'm not going to enter into that, whatever it is. So I just want to make sure our public knows that us as elected officials, that's our obligation to understand our ethics rules under that. Okay, so with that, then I will, if there's no further discussion, I will make my appointment. And so my appointment to this commission is Lupita Arroyo. So what do I need to do? I make that appointment, consulted with her. She's in agreement that she wants to be part of this committee. And so just approve the resolution.
That's all I need to do. We will modify the resolution to indicate that's the, the name of your appointment. And so then all I need to do is have the council consideration of the adoption of resolution fifty-nine forty-one.
Do the chair make a motion to the resolution fifty-nine forty-two with the, with the amendment forty-one? Forty-one, forty-one. I was already, the second one. Fifty-one, fifty-nine, forty-one.
Okay, so first and a second on the floor, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, everyone, as we work through that, that dialogue in terms of really deciding, you know, what we needed to do. So I will move on to item B two, which is our resolution number fifty-nine forty-two, resolution of the city council of the city of Solidad, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the lease agreement between the city of Solidad and Wendy Acres for preschoolers at two-three-seven Solidad Street. And I will turn it over to Brian.
Good evening, Mayor Velazquez, members of the city council. My name is Brian Swanson, keen and determined to help and direct it for the city. I'd like to thank Ariana for her help on the staff report. Just a quick background, Wendy Acres has leased property from the city of Solidad at two-three-seven Solidad Street since nineteen ninety-two. And on April seventh of twenty-ten, the city council approved a lease agreement for use of the property in facilities owned by the city of Solidad for a term of three years. In November of twenty-twelve, Wendy Acres requested an amendment allowing an additional five years at the same term at their current lease. Five-year extension was approved by council on March sixth of twenty-thirteen for the term of July one of twenty thirteen until June thirtieth of twenty eighteen. In twenty eighteen, the council considered and approved a restated lease, which simply restated all prior provisions and extended the term by five years from July one of twenty eighteen to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. And on January sixth of twenty twenty-one, an amendment to the lease was approved by council through resolution number five-six-seven-two to amend the current lease agreement due to difficulties operating during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. On January ten of twenty twenty-three, Wendy Acres requested another amendment to add five years to the lease with the city to continue to serve our community and provide preschool services at their current location. Wendy, Wendy Acres lease rate was established pursuant to the city of Solidad real estate property asset management policy adopted in two thousand nine. The current lease rate was set at sixty-six-hundred-sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents per month, which generates roughly a little over eight thousand dollars per year for the city. It's been a really good relationship between the city and Wendy Acres. However, discussions with the public work director, a potential building expansion of City Hall into the Wendy Acres building warrants a discussion between the council and Wendy Acres to execute a renewed lease agreement for Wendy Acres with a duration of two years. Wendy Acres has accepted the proposed amendment, but is also requesting consideration to increase the duration of the lease to be more than two years upon council's approval. With the applicable CPI increases, a renewed lease rate will begin at seven hundred and four dollars per month. And then the, the rate for the second year of the agreement would be increased by CPI. The renewed lease rate of seven hundred and five dollars per month generates over eight thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars per year for the general fund. And again, the, the second year would be increased by CPI. And that concludes this staff presentation. Here to answer any questions, Cindy is here as well from Wendy Acres.
Thank you, Brian, for the, for that update and the report. Let me, let me ask if there's any clarifications that the council needs and then we'll take it out to the public for any comments and then we'll bring it back for final discussion and approval. So is there any clarification, clarifying items that the council?
I do have a question to the chair. Is there, because I read that we are considering expansion of the building.
Yeah.
I think there, and there's not that much space. So I'm wondering if there is any plans that will start in two years. Like, let's say, yes, in two years, we're going to start building this, this area and that area. Which brought me to, to the thought of our stair car for the fire department. Is, is that in the plans? If not, is in the plans? I know that we have plans with that, with that, with the lot in the front. Have we considered that instead of selling it or? Basically, what I'm asking is, do we actually have plans to start building in two years?
It's very preliminary and, you know, and again, it would be funded by impact fees, which the city, we do not have enough impact fees at this point to be able to, to build. Our staff has been doing some preliminary, preliminary work and research on expansion. And so part of our job, the land use department, is to kind of predict what may happen. So, you know, we can appropriately have a good lease with Wendy Acres and they have a managed expectation of what may happen with the property. But to your, to your question, Councilmember Cabrera, it's, it's very early in the process. But we did want to bring that up if it expedites for some reason.
In, chair, if I, if I may, I just want to add that sometimes opportunities come up that although it might not be in the immediate, there could be a grant fund or something. So that's why you want to think about your lease terms not to lock in too long and then lose an opportunity. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Um, good, good chair. I have a question. I was going to say, first of all, I, you know, have lived in, in Solidad pretty much all my life and I've always heard great things about Wendy Acres. I actually tried to put my daughter's in there years ago, but they were, they were full. Again, they have a very good reputation and they're, they're very reliable with. I don't know if it would be feasible perhaps to do a two-year lease and then transfer it to a month-to-month? Maybe, and then also another thing I wanted to say was it was just important for me because daycare is so important to our parents, whether they're going to school, finishing their, their education or if it's for, for work or, or for whatever reason. I think daycare is pretty much like the foundation, you know, for, for any parent, really. And so to me, it's very important that, you know, that we're very transparent with Wendy Acres so that they're prepared and hopefully they have a spot to, to go to. So I definitely want to have that, that open, you know, relationship dialogue with them. I definitely would want them to be able to to transition smoothly to, to another area with the least interruption to our, to our children and to our parents.
So, thank you so many.
Sure. For me, you know, I think in the same lines of what Councilmember Cabrera was bringing up, you know, I think we're kind of, I think we're a little far off in, in the plans. We're kind of, I think we're a little far off in, in the plans and doing anything. So. For me, I knew, trying to figure out a compromise, I think, because I, I, I get the five year would be, you know, difficult if we're really serious about moving forward with any plans. I'm just wondering if maybe the council could, uh, look at maybe a three-year contract so that we could at least give them an opportunity to give them enough time. To really start looking, um, to see if there's something else that can be out there. And I think that we would like for the city staff to see if there's anything out there that might work out for them as well. Uh, paying seven hundred and four, I, I forgot, I don't have it right here, but I mean, is, it's quite a little bit of money. We're not going to find something probably in the area, but I think we need to figure out if there is something out there that, that could be comparable to that. Uh, but it gives them a little bit more time and we know that it doesn't lock them in for that long period of time of five years. So it's kind of a compromise, I think, maybe that we can move forward and it gives us an opportunity that, let's say, a year down the road, we do get a grant. It gives us that year of plan and then they know that they're going to be having to actually move out. Um, and if the, in two years, we see there's nothing there, then maybe we can have that conversation of extending it a little bit longer. But, um, I think that might be something that could be beneficial for our community. Because I think one of the things that we have with the Wendy Acres that is unique is that, um, for the most part, we have a few spots here. Uh, where there are, uh, opportunities for some of our lower income, uh, community to have some spots in other areas. This one kind of is in, in an area where it, it kind of fit that, that mold of the folks that don't have. Anything else, uh, to do, uh, to be able to have their, 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 uh, their children participate in a program that is enriching as, as this is. And so, um. We, I think as a council should be looking at ways that we can support not just Wendy Acres, but as many programs that we can hear that are, are daycare programs. In the past, uh, through first five, as well as with other partners, um, including Hartnell. There has been a focus of South County to try to grow the daycare centers, especially the home, uh, daycare providers and try to increase how many licenses we have here in our community. But I think this is a, a unique opportunity for us to support this particular, uh, program. And, you know, be able to say, you know, we understand we, we're looking at this facility, we're looking at how we can expand because we know. We need to expand. We, we, we understand that, uh, but if we, we're not there yet, let's see if maybe we can come up with some kind of compromise. And that's just me thinking of right here and, and throwing that out.
Thank you, council member Chavez. So let me just make my comments and I'll take it out to the public. Um, so for me, it's, it's, yes, um, I, I want to make sure, and then let me correct this because I don't think it's daycare. I'm going to say that.
Yeah.
It's preschool.
Yeah, for sure.
So I want to make sure that we're not confusing what the program offers. Um, so it is a preschool and I know that they obviously been here for a long time and my, my children were there. Um, so I'm appreciative as council member Chavez said, you know, the missing middle is really missing that. Component of having those preschool opportunities that I think would, our community has benefited by having. Having Wendy Acres there as a staple for many of us, right? That needed that preschool setting for our children. So, um, for me, my, my proposition is if we can do the, um, the, the five years, but when it, but we can add after the second year. We can add language that if there is no development that's being proposed. Then that we move forward with the three-year extension and that there's language in there though, that is a provision to be able to say. That in the, in the event that the city does have an opportunity to be able to obtain funding, to be able to redevelop that area as part of our city. Our city hall kind of note, then that there's an understanding going into this lease agreement that there is going to be that provision and, and that there is that opportunity. Um, and, and that, you know, staff can come back and look at it in two years and where we're at. And if not, then we can do the extension. That's my, my recommendation. And now there's several di- different recommendations from the council and just kind of looking at that. Um, but I think as well, I, I don't think, you know, as, as Ryan mentioned, we're in preliminary phases. I mean, you know, obviously we want the money, um, but the money's not here yet. And so I think the other thing that, um, council member Cabrera brought up is in terms of, um, where we're going to have the, um. The, what is it called? The fire department for our new fire, uh, for new fire truck. That's the bay, right? For the, for the fire truck. It's not going to, it's, it's not going to be in that area. So it's, it's not going to impose on that, correct?
That's right.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, you know, we have, you have several versions of different recommendations to be able to work on in terms of what's best. But, um, I think the, I think what I'm hearing from the council with the exception of Mayor Potem yet. Is that there is, um, there is obviously, uh, desire to continue to work with, with, uh, Wendy Acres preschool.
Okay, uh, yes, through the chair, uh, again, same thing, Wendy Acres have had an excellent relationship with the city of Solidad and also with their parents here in town. Uh, those that have not been in the, quite in other places, uh, to be able to utilize and close to home. So that's one of the advantages. And so we'd like to keep, continue that relationship, but also understanding that, you know, in the future. Eventually is that capital approval, we're going to, we're going to expand. And so giving them the opportunity also that they can look as well. So if we can word that contract or, or put provisions in there, some of the, uh, what councilman Chavez said and the mayor says, is that. There's a opt-out on our part in the event that we have funding and that we give them plenty of notification as soon as we find out. That we're able to move forward with that. So it gives Wendy Acres and our team to, uh, start looking for another place or that staff. Or the city assist them in finding another location somewhere within city limits to help facilitate that move. Um, I would be open to a three-year term. I know there's, there's, uh, different, uh, different opinions on here and, and we can put, uh, an agreement at some point. But if there's some type of opt-out in there and as long as we give them ample notification and then just real quick, secondly. On the capital improvements and also the daycare provisions, um, part of that was also measure F, that we were supposed to, uh, look at opportunities to. Uh, seek out and expand or, or, uh, start, uh, daycare programs where this is preschool or, uh, right, preschool. Um, that we have opportunities for that, for, uh, daycare as well here that we have yet to realize, uh, and include in our measure F budget as well. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. So let me take it out to the public.
Sure. Just, just to ask question. So, just because of that, so Mike, is, is, um, I, I know, um, Mayor Velazquez said that, uh, her children were there. My, my son was there as well. Is there anything that will? Um, prevent us from avoiding at this point?
Uh, you mean a conflict that would be associated with?
Yeah.
Okay, you're good. And we, we. And no harm, no harm in asking. I want to make sure.
Well, I think they, you know, Wendy, I, I, obviously they've been, they've been here for, for many years and provided that service for many, uh, many of our families. So, okay, let me take it out. Thank you for that question. Let me take it out to the public to see if there's any, any, um, comments or questions from our public on item B dash two. Okay, I see none. So I will bring it back to council, um, either for additional questions or for a, um. Or a vote.
To the chair, I, to the chair, I, I did, um, have a, I guess, a comment. Um, I was wondering if, if perhaps, let's say we do a, a three year, because I've heard, you know, a few say three years, which sounds fine. Um, would it, would it be maybe, um, possible or, uh, beneficial for, for the parents and, and the preschool as well? If there was some kind of provision where they'd say that in two and a half years, Wendy Acres finds a, a location that's. You know, affordable and they don't want to pass up on it. Maybe there could be something where they might be allowed to. Um, you know, just like, like for us to be able to take advantage of that because I wouldn't want that to be a burden on them either for them to pass up on something. There's not too many opportunities in Solidad, to be honest, building wise. So, um, you know, I, that's just a suggestion.
Yeah. Is there a contract language already?
For an opt-out.
Oh, for an opt-out on, on their end?
We can, so. Definitely we can include language in that, in the contract. And allow them to opt out if there's a better location.
Yeah, and up, out for us as well, with, with their funding. Yeah. Yeah. So thank you for the comments. I, I would go back then and amend my recommendation and I, but I'm okay. I mean, my recommendation still is. If we could do then the three years instead of the two years with a two-year extension. Um, we come back that there is no development with the provision to include the language. Um, that the, that language, um, that is in there for both the city and also for, um. For Wendy Acres in the event that they do have a better opportunity. Um, but this is a pretty great opportunity in terms of. The lease that's being, um, being paid on, on this, this, um, on this property. So.
So through the chair, just to get clarity, um, so you're saying a three-year contract with a possibility of a two-year extension if we're not moving forward with any projects?
Yep, a three-year with a two-year extension, uh, if no development is proposed to be undertaken at that time that we hit the three-year mark.
So, um, through the chair, just to clarify, um, you're comfortable with us making those amendments and proceeding with the lease? I think it authorizes the city manager to those terms. We can include an opt-out clause, um, and work with the.
And do, does the, does the council have any preference for the, the notice period that would be required for the exercise of the opt-out period? Are we talking six months, thirty days, uh?
Yeah, at least six months, um, but I mean, I mean, the opportunities are going to come.
Typically, typically, it is be done ninety days.
Ninety days?
Yeah, that's a common.
That's what I was thinking.
We had one with historical society that was.
Yeah. Okay, so ninety days to find another place. I mean, I don't, I don't know how viable that is.
I think ninety days is not viable. Well, um, excuse me, council, those of you down here, Cindy and me, yes, I'm the teacher director at Wendy Acres Preschool. So, thank you. Um, I believe we need at least six months because when a preschool, a licensed preschool moves to a new location. That location has to get relicensed. We just don't get up and get to move into a new building. So we will need to go through the whole licensing process again. And then licensing, state licensing will come out to license that building that we are now going to occupy. So ninety days is not a viable option. It would probably be months before that could take place.
Yeah, thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Cindy. So. So through, uh, so if we could do the, um, six months opt-out, then that would be, um, if the council is in an, an agreement with that. And it would still give us the five years that had been requested, but at the, at the third year would come back to look at. Do we really have a viable project? And if not, then it can, just so for clarity, then the, the contract can be extended an additional two years.
So that would be the only consideration at the three-year mark is whether or not there is, um, some construction anticipated? That would be the only way to not grant the extension for two years?
I don't know if there's any other concerns from the council in terms of not granting the extension.
Okay. That's one major.
Yeah, and then includes any development, right? Any kind of proposed initiative from the city.
Yeah. We'd, we'd add languages that would ob- obviously said that that would not be the case if for some reason they were in default or something. That would obviously provide you with, uh, the basis for not granting the extension if for some reason they hadn't paid their rent or something along those lines. But I, I don't want us to be in a position where we automatically just have to grant the extension no matter what the circumstances are. So.
But I think there's provisions in the contract, uh, in regards to default.
Yeah, I, I just would want to, I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear about that language. So it's all good. I'm, I'm not really worried about a default, but, um, but in any event, I just want to make sure that we capture what the council's direction is here.
Yeah, I think it goes with any other, like, lease language that we have for any other defaults that. The, the, um, the staff has authority to be able to remove or renovate, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So do we have a motion?
Yes, so I.
Second. With all that clarity, with all that clarity we have.
Recommendation then, so there's a motion on the floor with, and I think Megan captured those, uh, uh, additions. And language to be added to the contract. Right? Yeah, okay. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Uh, there's a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item B dash three, resolution number fifty nine forty three. Consider adoption of a resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement between the city of Solidad, the successor agency to the Solidad redevelopment agency. And the Solidad Unified School District for, uh, point six nine acre parcel of property at five hundred Monterey Street. City of Solidad with the construction of a twenty unit apartment complex and I will turn this over to.
Me.
Mike.
So, uh, council and agency, you have a resolution before you this evening in your role as both the city council and the successor agency board. Approving a purchase and sale agreement with the Solidad Unified School District for a six point, or point six nine acre parcel of property. By way of background, the, uh, the district's workforce housing project has been in, uh, process for a, a number of years and is funded by Measure N school bonds. Um. It will result in the construction of twenty new units, one and two-bedroom units, uh, to be operated by, or to be occupied by district employees. Um, and located on a vacant parcel property located at five hundred Monterey Street. The conditional use permit for the project was approved by the planning commission on September eighth of two thousand twenty-two. And the architectural review permit was approved by the planning commission acting as the architectural review committee on April fifth. Both of those documents were conditioned on acquisition of the property. Um, the sales price is four hundred thousand dollars and that's based on an appraisal that both parties, uh, reviewed and approved. Um, the closing date, uh, is six months. That's the, uh, the escrow period, although I think both parties are anticipating it'll close much sooner than that. Um, the city also, uh, has the right of first refusal. If for some reason the district decides not to use that, uh, this property for, um, this purpose. And they decided instead that they wanted to resell the property, they would have to offer it back to the city for the sales price of four hundred thousand dollars. And the city would have the, the first right to purchase that property if we wanted to do that. Um. Uh, just should reference that it's, although it's built into the resolution that's before you. The, uh, the project has already been determined to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as an infill project. And it is also exempt from the Surplus Lands Act, which is that body of law that now is controlling the ability of sales to dispose of. Um, what is the, uh, excess property, um, because this particular transaction involves a sale of property from one public entity. In this case, two public entities, the city and the successor agency to another public entity. In this case, the school district. It is exempt from the provisions of the Surplus Lands Act, which is a good thing. The Surplus Lands Act that, where, is a sort of, uh, complex and long process whereby you have to advertise. You have excess property that you're going to sell and does anybody else have an interest in the purchase of the property and so forth? All in the, uh, effort to try to develop more housing. In this particular case, it should be exempted from the Surplus Lands Act just because of the fact that it will result in the. Development of twenty units of housing, but it isn't, but it's exempt for other reasons. Um, staff is recommending approval of the resolution that's before you. Um, I have Ariana here tonight. If you have any questions about the CUP or the architectural review, although for all intents and purposes, those are complete. And have been approved by the planning commission and no appeals were, uh, filed. And I believe that the superintendent is also here. He has a, a few words that he might want to say. I have confirmed, um, from the superintendent as well as I, I did receive a notice from the, uh, the attorney for the district that I've been working with on the preparation of this agreement. That the, uh, school board did approve the same agreement the other night at their, uh, meeting.
Thank you, um. Thank you, Mike, for providing that, um, update and the report. So, uh, let me. Start with any comments or clarifications from the council and then I'll take it out to the public and then we'll come back. So do we have any comments or clarifications here from the council or questions on the, um? On the agreement?
Uh, I have, to the chair, uh, a, a quick comment, uh. I'm glad that we're at this point. It's unfortunate that we were not able to, uh, um, acquire a couple of units for our staff. Uh. However, uh, we went through the process, uh, to, uh, to try to do that. And we also were aware that, uh, there's time constraints involved as well because every day that we prolonged it. And, uh, revealed that, uh, the costs were going to go up. So, um, I'm excited to see the project coming forward. I'm excited for the opportunity for our teachers and for, uh, school staff to have. To, uh, to find a, a place here and, and help me as well, uh, sit the, the school district in recruiting, uh, new teachers. And providing them with a place to live as well. So. Forward to the, uh. The construction to get started. Also, the tax period.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, um, Mayor Potem. So, did you have, I have some comments and some questions actually before we go out. So I don't know if any of the council members have any.
Just, just through the chair, just really quickly. I don't, I don't have a whole lot. I, I keep, you know, we've gone through this process. It was, it was a lot longer than I think it. It, it should have been. Um, I'm just glad that, that it's going to move forward and even though it's not in the exact direction that we had originally thought we would be moving forward with. I, I'm really happy for this leadership to move this project. I I'm really happy for the school district to move this project along and get this done as quickly as possible because I really do think that this is one barrier that could be overcome by uh for some of these teachers and some of these classified uh employees here in our in our area, in our city of Solidad. So this is something that has, you know, that was a dream for years uh now and it's finally gonna come uh to fruition, so I'm 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 happy for for the school district and I'm happy for the city of Solidad as a community, so thank you guys.
Through the chair, I just uh wanted to kind of echo similar uh similar comments as my fellow colleagues have. Um, I just wanted to say, I think to all of us sitting up here, youth are very important. And pretty much at at the end of the day, this is something that's gonna benefit our youth to be able to see their teachers at the store, be able to uh you know, see their teachers at uh, I don't know, at Starbucks or somewhere, and I really think, you know, um we do a lot of uh recognition when it comes to our youth. We have some amazing uh scholars, I mean amazing athletes um here in Solidad, and it really makes me excited to know that at the end of the day, that's just gonna, who's gonna benefit them. This is something that I believe, you know, our our taxpayers also have expert that they voted that they wanted, so. Um, I remember my first meeting was back last year in September, my first council meeting, and one of of the first items that was on the agenda was um the school, school housing, school staff housing, so I'm excited to see this finally. Uh, you know, uh be where we're at now. And I'm happy to know that, you know, hopefully it helps you guys out when it comes to recruiting, but not just to recruit, but also to retain good staff and good uh teachers, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, through the chair, just just echo everything they said, but uh I wanted to say that is yes, it is important that our students see their teachers in places around the city, but mostly in the classroom, because I know there's a lot of, we're suffering so much for retention of good teachers. And I hope that this uh um this uh hmm units are the base for retaining our great teacher we have. Thanks so much for what you do.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I think for me, it just, you know, I I just wanna say it's unfortunate. Um, I'm glad that this project is moving forward, but it's unfortunate that we didn't have the partnership. And I do wanna say for our public and just for transparency purposes, um that the city did make every effort to make sure that this was a a a true partnership. Um, because as much as our employees, school employees and teachers need housing, so so does our city employees. And I know we've lost several city employees because they can't find a place to live, and so that's not, I mean, that's across the board. Uh, so for me, it's, you know, just wanna make sure that um our our public understands that, um and there's no assumptions of what happened. Um, but that, you know, the city, the city did um do every intent to be able to have this partnership, uh be a true partnership, um to be able to meet most needs and needs of our teachers, but also the needs of our public employees. Um, but with that, and you know, I obviously housing is is a need in our community, and I'm glad that we're moving forward with that. Um, and I also wanna say, you know, commend the school district because there was, these are public funds, so these are, we voted, we voted to be able to get these bonds um to to come for housing, and there was obviously a lot of other um purposes for that money. But a portion was for that in in a year that there was a pandemic. Um, our residents voted, you know, to be able to ensure that these dollars did go to our public and and were utilized for housing. Um, many other cities did the same efforts as the school districts, solid that school district did, and they didn't, you know, the voters didn't approve it. Uh, so I think I know, we know, and we've seen here in the city of Solidad that our residents are are really supportive of anything that has to do with, um you know, with kids, with youth, with families. So um I'm excited that we're moving forward, and I think, again, you know, these are taxpayer dollars. And um it's our, we're incumbent, we're we're stewards of making sure that the money that are, you know, as taxpayers, we pay are really being invested in our community, so I'm happy to see this this moving forward. I did have a couple of questions though um on this, on the on the agreement. So there is two rental units that I know it states here that they're gonna be available to very low eh low income households and one unit to moderate, but I just wanna clarify that this is not, we're still gonna do an affordable housing agreement as part of our twenty percent inclusionary, correct? Because this the this gives us, I mean, I know this is more of the purchase agreement, but but there is going to be. Affordable for those two affordable units under our inclusionary that really lay out more of uh the income levels and all of that.
Will be set forth in agreement, that's required as one of the conditions on the conditional use permit.
Okay, perfect. And so just wanted to clarify that. Um, and then my other question too, on some of the provisions on six point two and six point three, I just need clarification because it does talk about the city will bear half of the cost of escrow fees. So we, even though we're selling the property, we have to pay for those fees.
That's pretty standard, yes.
And then the seller shall bear the cost of mortgage prepayment penalty, so that's standard as well?
Yes.
Well, I guess I haven't sold property.
I haven't owned any property, but I actually tell you that this is standard, yeah.
Okay, um. Thank you. So those were my only two comments, and then I will um take it out then to the public if there's any comments from our public. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, um Mayor Blaskis, welcome city manager Hunter, council staff. Uh, Governor, Board President is also in the audience tonight and providing board leadership uh for this project. And this proposal is a purpose to address you as a council, and some of this has already been mentioned, but we did approve the bond measure N in December twenty twenty, and uh this would provide funding a little bit for technology, which has been used for technology, but a large there for the building of staff housing. And this is a newer concept that you're more and more about it, where school districts are realizing that this is a key strategy. And not only recruitment of teachers, but attainment of teachers, and that's really our aim. You post by cities, uh Jefferson Union uh Central District in Daly City has built a successful project and we've been doing some contact that will learn how to do it, and uh that's been appreciated, areas in center clear as well. So here in Solidad, approximately twenty five percent of our teachers, and a higher percentage of classified employees live here in town. We believe this is a benefit for the district, to the community, where our employees live here in town and to be invested in as part of, as part of this wonderful community. And pursuing this project to its recruitment and attention, uh in terms of recruitment, uh while Solidad pays competitive salaries to new teachers, the cost of housing is a barrier uh for some teachers, or just finding housing is a barrier. And so the possibility of offering affordable housing to new hires increases the chances of fully staffing our schools, quality teachers and other staff. Regarding retention, we believe that having staff housing allows for newly hired hired teachers to gain a foothold in the community and uh paying uh below market rental rates, which is a part of the business model of the project. District employee will be able to stay towards purpose of their own home here in Solidad, and they would be a member of the community in the long term. And then, so we continue where we use the units to recruit and entertain. Uh, we conducted a survey ahead of the election and found out that uh we had under twenty two respondents and forty four percent of them would be very interested in living below in below market, the teacher staff housing. Uh, and they were uh sixty six somewhat interested, so a large share would be interested in such a concept. Over the past two, the past years, as they mentioned, the district with this design team has worked to construct or worked on the project, they can start housing. And this is uh included working with the city of Solidad. I wanna say that experience in working with Brian and his staff has been excellent, we appreciate all the uh work and collaboration along those lines, leading to the approval uh by the planning commission of the project. Uh, also wanna recognize Brent Slama and Ned Fries for their support during uh leading up to this point. Uh, so we uh just thank the council, and I know it's uh something that's on the agenda. Um, and we're looking forward to uh the government, we'll record the project, so thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Randy. Okay, do we have any additional comments? So I will take it out to um those that are joining us virtually. Do we have any comments from our members of the public? Okay, so there is no um comments, so I will take it, I will bring it back now to the council for either additional comments, questions, or for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve resolution fifty nine forty three.
So there's a first and a second on the floor, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Congratulations, and we look forward to the housing development. Okay, so we'll move on for our next item on the agenda, which is our last item of of business for today, which is discussion on the current process of garage sales on residential premises, so you'll, I turn this over to Mike or Megan or Mike.
So uh, I'm sorry, caught me a little off guard, but uh so the council had asked for this item to be agendized for focuses of discussing uh a possible reduction uh in the uh the permit fee that's been charged for garage sales. Um, so that's what it's agenda for primarily, that just to facilitate that discussion. There's no specific action that's associated with this, other than uh you can reach a consensus to provide direction to staff and we'll bring it back for uh future consideration. The current rate uh established in the master fee schedule, and I think as adjusted um by the uh the CPI a couple of times is thirty one dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, so I will open this up to this for discussion and comments, and then I will take it out to our public for any comments on this item. And so I'll start with um Mayor Potem, if there's any comments you wanna make on this item, if you want this item to be brought back.
Uh, yes, a couple of items, uh one, it's garage sale season, so uh it was appropriate to bring it up. I know we had brought it up before and just kinda voted out there, so I wanted to bring it back. Um, I'd like to reduce it to uh um my my, I'm here for the public out there, they're acceptable, willing to pay fifteen bucks for a permit uh to do their garage sales, because it oftentimes, no, they're just trying to pass on uh the items that they're no longer using, so instead of going to recycling the waste that's being passed down by people making purchases and recycling it through our own waste, the garage sale. So I think that's responsible for our community, and we should encourage it and continue it by reducing the fees, so it wouldn't be so they don't feel like they're having to pay so much. Uh, and I know that the the, if I'm not mistaken, they have, they can have two a year. They had two a year, and and with that said, that you have those that have it every weekend. So the court enforcement needs to be done as well with that, that they have to be working Sunday and Saturday to uh get those uh repeat offenders that are having it, they're making it easy and stuff. Where the regular ones on the block, the mom and pops that are doing their their little uh garage sale stuff and purging their old stuff and and uh passing it on to others, so for reduced price, I think is appropriate that we do it at fifteen bucks. And then also get out there and be our code enforcement, and then have them on Saturdays and Sundays, getting those repeat offenders that are trying to corner the market. Those are my comments, man.
Thank, thank you for that.
Fifteen bucks.
Fifteen dollars, I got it fifteen dollars in code enforcement on Saturday and Sunday. Um, so comments, I have some comments as well.
Oh, you know, I think we brought it up quite a bit of times, and I I'm I'm okay with fifteen dollars. I was thinking, I I was thinking we should increase uh not the uh the cost, but to allow folks to be able to have four per year rather than just have the two. Uh, the idea would be that, I was thinking of just cutting it in half and making it fifteen seventy five or fifteen's fine with me. Um, and what I was thinking is that we should come up with a a procedure, I brought it up several times before, that we should have garage sales, garage sales, whatever you wanna call them, on the last weekend of every month, so that code enforcement can just know that the last weekend of every month is when they have to go out and do the code enforcement. And my simple way of handling it would be, the first time they get the first permit, it's a blue permit. The second time they get the permit, it's an orange permit. The third one is a yellow one, and the last one is a red one. There, you've taken care, now you know that this person has their last, the one for the year, so if you do the four different colors, you know who has what. Uh, staff could make easily do a Google map of every location that has pulled the permit, so there's a Google map of every point in town that is permitted. The staff can know that those are the places, if they're not on that last weekend, if it's on the first weekend or second weekend or third weekend, we already know that that's automatically an illegal uh garage sale. Um, and it's just done simply, that's I, for me, that, you know, I brought it up before, I'll bring it up again. It just seems like that's just a lot simpler for staff. We don't have a lot of employees, we've got one. It just seems like that'd be the easiest way to do it, and it gives the opportunity for folks to be able to to earn a little bit of money and get and recycle some of the stuff that folks like to use again or buy again, and it doesn't become a business per se as it happens sometimes in in our community, and so that's just my suggestion. I'm just trying to be practical.
Thank uh, thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Um, so.
I through the chair, no, I I really don't have any comment. Uh, I'm okay with the the council um agreements.
Yeah, thank you, so I love you. Yeah, let me make my comment.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, my, whatever recommendation, um, I lack the fifteen, the fifteen dollars. I think, you know, I have yard sales, I stopped doing them a long time ago, um, you know, like heckling with the prices, but I think, you know, it's environmentally uh friendly, and then also it'll put hopefully some, you know, a little bit of money in the pockets of our of our residents, which nowadays is is probably much needed. Um, so I'm fine with the fifteen dollars, uh so we could help them out, I think it, you know, uh will help clean and anti-clutter, and also, um, I feel that three, three a year is is good.
Thank you, Councilmember Alejo. Um, so I'll make my comments. Um, so I I, you know, my comments is also, I I'm recommending that we do four a year, and so I know that there is obviously, I I don't know why, obviously, there probably must have been at some point some issues with garage sale permits, because I think our municipal code is pretty hefty in terms of, you know, the allowing for that, but I think we're in different times now. And I think, um, you know, we're we're really um gonna make sure that we're enforcing with a lot of the new laws that are coming, especially in regards to climate and being friendly to our planet, and we're really wanting to do the reduce, reuse, recycle. I think this gives us an opportunity to really be the leaders on that, to tell our communities as well, look, this is gonna be permitted, and it's not just two kinds. I think two kinds is crazy, I mean, it's pretty limited in terms of garage sale. I love garage sales, by the way, and you know, it's a, you find so many amazing things, and so instead of it going to our landfills, and I think that's what we're trying to do, is avoid these going to our landfill. So I know before I had brought it up when it was during the pandemic, and we wanted to make sure that we, you know, this wasn't a challenge for our community members. And so I thank um Mayor Potem for bringing it back up, but I think now it's an opportunity to look at some of that code language and be able to see how we can um rectify that moving forward. So I would recommend as well that we do four a year, and I love the process to be able to have a color coding system to say, hey, this is a permit, that people understand that. And then we also know, right? Okay, that's your last, that's your last garage sale. But I think four is, I mean, I think we start with four, and and I think it before is even a little bit, I mean, I would uh want to do more. Um, but I understand there's people that use it as as a system to be able to do it, but there's a lot of our residents that don't. There's a lot of people that want to do garage sales, right? And so I think the more that we open up those opportunities, that the better, and so I'm okay with four, if we, you know, four, I mean, I would even say six a year for those that really want to do it. But it's four, I'm fine with four, and then fifteen dollars reduction. Um, but I also wanna go back to look at some of the, what's in the municipal code language, because the municipal code states that the permit process is administered by the police and fire. And because they're enforce it, but I just, you know, ask, is that a good use of their time to be able to be issuing these permits? And I think, I mean, there's, you know, I I I I would like to see that moved into a different department instead of it being done through the police department, um, because I just, I mean, I just feel, you know what? We've tasked police and fire to do a lot of other stuff and adding the, this is a, this is a process. So if we can look at the, you know, municipal code and make those changes, we, where is the best, where is the best location for that to happen? Um, and then also under their current code, it states that, the ordinance states that there is no fee, so all of this is free. So if we can change it, because it does say there are no fee for permits. This is really based on what you have presented to us, Mike, it's really based on the master fee schedule that we adopt, right? So making sure that the language in our municipal code is really reflective of what is true, right? Of how we're gonna handle that.
And so the thought on that would be that we would just indicate that the the fee would be set in the master fee schedule. Um, and 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 initially will be set by way of a resolution that will have accompanied the uh the ordinance changes and so forth. But that makes sense, so that way we don't have to keep changing the ordinance every time that you wanna make some kind of tweaks to the uh the fee.
Okay, yeah, so I, yeah, I agree, I think that would be, but if we could do it now, instead of it, since we're already discussing this, do we need to bring that back for approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it'll be an order, it'll be an ordinance change, it'll have to be, you know. Cause it'll be an order, it'll be an ordinance change. It'll have to be, you know, first and second reading and so forth. So.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think if we can clean it up, we have an opportunity to do that now and then just look at the other language. Cause I know that there was another adjusting of fees requires amendment to ordinance, um, but because there is, but um, so you clarified that reduction of fee requires taxpayer support for private activity?
I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, so I just, some of that cleanup language.
Um, we can, we can expedite the, uh, the cleanup language and bring it forward to you then. So, um, and what about the, uh, the idea that, um, Councilmember Chavez brought up, which is to, uh, identify specific times that the, uh, the, uh, that the garage sales can be held.
I mean, I.
The, the only reason I bring that up is because it just makes it a lot, we don't have tons of staff. So for me, if it's done on the, it doesn't matter, first weekend, second week, it doesn't. I just came up with the last weekend, just because it makes sense to me that if, if it's on the same weekend, we know that everybody's doing a garage sale, code enforcement can knows. And if you, if staff can just do a map, it's pretty simple to do a map. It'll take, you know, twenty minutes to do a Google map of every address that has a permit. They can just know that who has it and just try buying is done. Yes.
I just, for me, through the chair, I think the challenge is if everyone knows it's on that thing, and that's when enforcement is looking, then everyone will go on the, the first weekend, second weekend, and third weekend. Um, unless, you know, the residents are calling in and providing that information. I just don't know if that would be easier or not.
Yeah, I just, I, I've now come in on that too, because I think it'll be difficult. I mean, I know when I want to have a garage sale, it's really hard, especially when people are gathering stuff or you're moving or whatever it is, you know, that it's, I have to wait until the end of the month or have to wait at the beginning of the month. I think that just puts more constraints on our, I mean, this is already constraining in terms of what we had in the municipal code.
It was just.
Constraints on it.
But the colors are pretty good.
I like the colors.
Yeah, the colors is really good idea. Cause that, that will be known.
And, and I think, yeah, through the chair, if, if it's acceptable, I think, um, maybe when we come back to the, to the, with the ordinance modifications, we can, um, we'll have time to talk to the code enforcement and the chief and figure out um, a plan for enforcement. Um, and that would give him the, the flexibility to change. Because sometimes you think one way with code enforcement and it, and you try it and then it doesn't work, and you have to kind of shift around. So um, I know when we did, um, truck enforcement, we used QR codes, which actually helped our officers. But again, you need to probably work internally on that.
Okay, yeah. So Mayor Potem, you, you're good with that?
Yeah.
Um, so the other thing for me is just signage. Um, so I know when I was reading the, the, the mini coded, they talk about where signs, uh, signs cannot be posted in other locations other than the property. And I know that we don't have that here. There are signs that are posted everywhere. And sometimes they're there. I mean, and I know we want to make sure people come to our garage sale, but I also know that sometimes they're left there, right? And then that kind of creates some of that, um, just light in, in our city. So I think if we can really make sure that people are adhering to where the signs are going to be posted um, and that there's a notice on that. Okay, good. So then with that, do we need to, uh, make a motion or it's just a discussion?
Yeah, I, I think we've got a consensus. There were no objections to those basic outlines that the, uh, the mayor pointed out, which is, uh, four per year. I think there was a consensus on that, um, a charge of fifteen dollars per sale. Um, some check the language with respect to signage, um, possible change in the enforcement department. Um, and, uh, and then just general cleanup because of the fact that the, that garage sale ordinance has been in place since nineteen eighty-six. So it definitely may need some tweaking, right?
Yeah, and yeah, so it's administration, who administers the, um.
Right.
Maybe not code enforcement, but the, who.
The administration, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. That's what I meant to say. Yeah. So the administration, the actual handling of the, uh, the applications, so forth.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you for that. So we'll move on then, um, to our next item, which is city reports. Um, so I, I will start with my reports. On May the fifth, I was invited to be a guest speaker to talk about local government and my role as mayor at Notre Dame High School in Salinas. Then I just want to thank a teacher, Roland Potten, for the invitation to be able to discuss local government and civic engagement. Um, on five, on May sixth, I did attend the Women in Carmen Resource Center in King City. Um, and that was, I had mentioned it last time, they gave preschool supplies, mental health workshops, resources for young girls, free hygiene products and more. There was over a hundred and fifty people that attended, and so it was really exciting. So I just want to thank all of the Monterey County Rotaries and our Solidad Rotary that was there as well, and it was partnering with this event. Um, the guest speaker, other guest speakers included Janine Patchoni, who's the Monterey County DA, um, Genevieve Armitares, who was a coordinator and founder of the MNS Mentorship Scholarship Program. So I, I do know that there's potential, um, that there is going to be one here in Solidad, and we're gonna hear more from that partnership with Solidad Rotary as well, as well as the other rotaries in Monterey County. So that was a pretty amazing event. So really, uh, we're gonna continue, we're gonna continue with that. And then on the eighth, I did, um, as the chair of the Monterey Salinas Transit, we did have a board meeting. Um, some of the highlights from that was, uh, presented, we presented a recognition to Greenfield Councilwoman Yanely Martinez for her six years of service on that board. Um, we did have a report from the Measure Two Oversight Committee reporting their fiscal year twenty twenty-three. How they expended, um, that all of the funds under the Measure Q, which was a sales tax that was approved by the voters in twenty fourteen. Um, and that specific, um, tax is the local transit funding for senior citizens, veterans, and people with disabilities. So they presented their, um, uh, just, uh, verification that all of the funding was eligible. There were eligible expenses under that specific revenue source. Um, and then the board reviewed the draft for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five operating and capital budget. Um, and there will be a public meeting that will be how to obtain public input, uh, before the board approves, um, the operating and capital budget. And then the eleventh, I attended the Solidad Rotary recognition of the Solidad High School students academic and community service. If you want to thank President Ivan, Ivanivara Mora, or, and all the Rotarians, um, for doing these great recognitions of our students. And it was really great to see a lot of, here, a lot of our girls really focused on STEM, which is pretty exciting STEM careers. And then so many of our students really focusing on going to UC schools. So congratulations to all of the students and the parents and to, um, Solidad Rotary. Uh, on the, on the tenth, um, I did attend, as, as, in my role as mayor and member of the Latino Pockets as part of my city function, and also participant of the wealth cohort, I'd attended a water panel at the West Basin Municipal Water District uh, to talk about the importance of water and equitable water policies within our communities of color. Uh, so I just want to make sure I'm transparent with my community that there was no city funds that were used as part of this. I participated as a program participant and also as a mayor, my, my perspective on why water is important and why it's important for elected officials to really understand where our water comes from and that all of our policies are equitable. And so just want to make sure that our, our public understands there was no use of city funds for, for that. Um, and then also on the sixteenth, as part of the chair of Monterey Salinas Transit, I attended the California Transit Association Supreme Legislative Conference in Sacramento. Uh, so we did hear our keynote speaker was card chair, the, Lane, Lane Randolph, who talked about funding under the federal program. Also, uh, funding that's critical to secure transit operations. We also heard from different members of the Assembly and the Senate um, and some of the federal representatives as well, um, regarding some of the, uh, opportunities right now that are impacting the future of transit. So there is a lot that, um, is being done right now to really revamp our transit system. I know for us, we, as part of MST, uh, for the past two years, I've been doing this Better Bus Network. I know that there's still solid that we still need to move forward on that plan to be able to provide better services for, for our community members here. Um, uh, and then they're also converting the, the bus fleet to electric. So there was discussions about a potential hydrogen plant coming, uh, opportunities. But the state is looking at a procurement process that's gonna allow for these hydrogen plants to come, and it's an opportunity also for more job creation and to have more, more hubs. Um, and just a couple of announcements. I just have two announcements on my, my end here. Is I just want to do a shout out to, uh, Jesse Vieral, who's a Solidad resident, also a CSU MB art student and an artist and resident at Region Monterey, who is creating a visual art project focused on raising awareness on the importance of repurposing, recycling, reusing um, discarded, discarded materials. So I just want to see how we as a city can also work with CSU MB, the Visual Public Art Department, to create something similar here for us at the wastewater treatment facility, uh, focused really on water conservation and water recycling. I think it's a great opportunity to be able to partner with CSU MB. Um, also, uh, working with, with Chief Watson and the Solidad Youth Council. We're preparing the upcoming Gun Violence Prevention Forum, so it is scheduled for May thirtieth at six PM at the Community Center. So I know we're finalizing those flyers. So I just want to, you know, thank, thank, um, everybody that participated, uh, putting this together. But I think more so our main suite middle school students, um, Mr. Ty Bosworth's classroom, who, you know, shared with all of us as a council and sent us all tons and tons of letters, talking about their impact. And they're concerned in regards to gun violence, and I think we've seen more and more on our TV screens, right? It's just like almost on a weekly basis that there is another mass shooting. So I think it's important for our community to be able to engage in that conversation and, uh, find a way to look at different strategic efforts as part of our violence prevention plan as well. You know, what can we do to raise awareness and, um, and have some prevention mechanisms? So with that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Chavez.
Um, I didn't have a whole lot to, to report on except for I did attend a fundraiser for, uh, Hartnell. It was passed, uh, Saturday, uh, for raising funds for student scholarships. Um, they raised quite a bit. Normally they raise plus five hundred thousand dollars at that fundraiser to, uh, raise, uh, funds for those students' scholarships, and they normally get a quite, quite a bit of scholarships uh, from that, uh, fundraiser. Also, on May eleventh, I attended the Solidad Rotary, um, top scholar, just as, uh, Mayor Velasquez mentioned, she was there as well, uh, and also the, uh, students that have demonstrated their, uh, community hours that they participated in. It was a wonderful event, uh, that the Rotary put on, and, uh, it was in conjunction with the school district. And so that partnership there has demonstrated, uh, such, uh, great fruit and saw so many, uh, students there that, uh, were talking about being accepted to UC Berkeley. I've never seen so many students to get accepted to UC Berkeley. It was pretty amazing. Uh, I, I, I didn't count how many there was, but I just kept hearing uh, that school. And so, um, not that, that any other school isn't as, uh, great as, as, uh, as, as Berkeley. But that was just amazing to hear so many coming from here from our small community to be going to such a prestigious school along with all the students that were heading out to all the other universities. Uh, and the others that are thinking about where they're going to be heading, that this opportunity at an event like this kind of lets them think about not just universities, but where they're thinking of, of moving forward. And so it's, it's a great opportunity to see, uh, these kids participate in these young adults do. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Correlo?
Yes, uh, I actually had a couple of things. I, I was, I'm sorry, I was not able to attend the, the, uh, ceremony, but I was at the ninth, on the ninth, for the scholarship stuff later. And that is great. I mean, I get really happy every time that I go there and really angry at the same time. Cause I, I, I happy because, uh, a lot of our young people are, have so much potential, so much potential. And I think that, that we as parents and, and as elected officials should be doing more to encourage that. Um, and, uh, because I'm always, uh, hoping that my children, that I will see my children get uh, everything. And I think that parents always look like that. I was thinking that. So thank you so much for both the, the school and, and the work it's doing so much for our students. Um, and, um, the other thing that I did that was on the ninth, and I had a meeting with the, yeah, I had a meeting with, with, um, uh, yes, and, um, they explained it to me, the, the whole, um, that I was playing as an alternative and, um, invited me to attend meetings and, uh, gave me, provided me all the information, which, uh, first I didn't, I didn't think that it was so great. I mean, that information that, uh, that agency has so much, uh, to do, uh, with how we develop in, um, in, uh, inside of cities and outside of cities. And I probably gonna see you there, uh, even, even if you don't miss that appointment. And I mean, yeah, the meeting, because I think that is, um, there's so much information that I would like to know in this. The other thing that I, I think I made with the historical society, I was not able to go uh, for, uh, due to work, I was not able to go to the meeting, which was, I believe, last week, right? Uh, last week, um, but I've been trying to make, I, I've been making an effort to meet with them every time that I, that I have. Um, and last time, uh, we met, uh, we talked about, um, contract that we have on the possibility of having more people in it. Uh, but I think that what the locations that they have are already all that's, um, the stands are already, the spaces are already filled. And one concern, because of the letter that, that they sent us before is that, uh, they don't have enough, uh, spaces and, and the, uh, the spaces that they have, um, the people that they have already have been there with them for several years. So it is, um, uh, the other thing that we talk is that we don't have with them, we don't have, as a council, we don't have goals, uh, to achieve. And maybe that's something if we want to talk about expanding with them, maybe we should talk about creating goals so we can, um, make, uh, something out of it, if we want more people to be part of that. I mean, I'm talking about the, not, not that society, but I'm talking about the, I'm sorry, I'm looking at you. Yes, I, I have to mention it. What I'm saying is about the, um, the farmers. Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention the, the farmer's market. And, uh, so I'm, uh, probably gonna leave, but then, uh, tomorrow and see if, uh, there's any more information that I can play.
Good. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Correlo?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, last, uh, week, I was invited for, um, by Blanca, uh, from the Pinnacle National Park. And so she invited me to a meeting of the Pinnacle Skateway, uh, partners that they had at the Epic uh, center in Hollister. And so it was a very well-attended meeting. I want to say there was maybe thirty community leaders um, from both the Monterey County as well as from San Diego County. Um, and I know we all want to get home, but I just thought it was real important because we're really working hard on, you know, uh, working with them. And so, um, just to kind of let you guys know, part of, uh, what the meeting was, was, uh, to discuss how we can pray. Sorry. It says, uh, to, they want to reimagine the role of the Pinnacle Skateway Partners and bringing supporting partnerships with local property owners, private sector, feral state and local government entities in the preservation, enhancement, economic and tourism potential and management of the central California coast and the Pacific Coast ranges, importing that cultural resources. So it was like a very, very thorough meeting. Um, it was, uh, a real open dialogue. I really, uh, enjoyed it a lot. And so that's just kind of, um, you know, to let you guys know a little bit, and pretty much the Pinnacle Skateway, uh, partners kind of did the meeting, but we are looking at forming, or they're looking at forming another, another committee that's, uh, the mission is gonna be pretty much that, which is to really work at the gateway, uh, cities, which is solid as well as Hollister. Um, so I was going to mention to them and suggest that we hold a next meeting here. Um, also, I attended, um, as some of my colleagues did, the, uh, what it was said, the top, um, top ten for scholar academics for the, uh, Solidad High School um, as well as community service. And I was very honored to be there because it was my first, first event attending as a national, uh, Rotary member. Um, so that was very special to me and also very, uh, encouraging to see, you know, all the, uh, the amazing scholars that we have. And I think it's just really a reflection of, of the teachers that we have, the parents. Um, you know, that are, that are raising these kids. So that was awesome. Um, also, the last, uh, meeting, just wanted to touch on this quickly because I did mention at the last meeting that we were gonna do a cleanup at the cemetery. Um, I've been receiving a lot of complaints, um, through phone calls, emails, texts, social media regarding the condition of the cemetery. And, uh, we do, you know, I do let them know that we don't oversee them, we don't govern that Solidad Cemetery District. Um, so. Um, so what I had decided to do along with, with some other city leaders was to do a cleanup. So uh, Supervisor Lopez actually contacted me a couple of days ago, so he has his staff has reached out. To the board members, I believe, of the Solidad uh, Cemetery District. And so we're gonna be uh, we're looking at cleanup dates right now that work for everyone. And also I wanted to mention, um, Joseph Sanchez, who's the Vice President of the Rotary. I know that that was something that was important to him and he was actually one of the people that initiated uh, that, that uh, call to action. To just, let's just go and do it ourselves. Um, so that is uh, coming, coming up and then. I think that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Plata.
Yes, thank you. I'll, I'll make it quick. Uh, five four, I had the executive meeting with the citizens' value waste, waste uh, solid waste uh, uh. Group and we meet tomorrow night for the regular meeting, um, in addition to us, I met with the, with the mayor and uh, Congresswoman uh, Lofren. Uh, regarding the damage to our uh, our devils right there at the, the wastewater pond. And uh, for the request for some assistance to get some help to repair those. Because the river has moved in the past, we had a buffer zone and now it's up against that area, so that's one of concern. And uh, you know, uh, she uh, said she would uh, do whatever she could to try to set the city in. And getting some assistance to uh, get that repaired before we have another type of uh, uh, situation similar to that. That occurred in ninety-five as well and then this, uh, this year. The other thing with the solid waste authority, uh, if we could have uh, uh, someone from the staff, I believe. Uh, Jesus Benzo from the Communication Director, contact Mandy Brooks uh, to uh, get together. Do like a town hall meeting or connect to one of the meetings that we're having to go with the new uh, requirements for multi-residential units. For recycling and the process of that, um, they're doing community outreach now, but they're looking to coordinate dates. So Manny Broo should be the contact person at Solid Waste Authority. And then uh, on this, on this uh, uh, the list as well, uh, the teacher staff housing committee. Um, I'm, I'm glad to say that there, we just approved it and move it forward so that committee can be dissolved and. Put away with and uh, at rest and uh, watch the, the school start their construction. So that's all I have.
Thank, thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor Plata. Um, so. Well, wanna uh, make sure, I know I forgot to tell you guys about the LaCo Commission and in terms of the cemetery. Because all of us have been getting um, different um, updates and different efforts that are going on. So I just wanna share with the, the board that would, uh, with the council and also with our public. Uh, so I did contact, oh, I did contact, I sit on the LaCo Commission, so I did reach out to uh, the director to be able to say, how can, what, what can we do here? What are the provisions? What are the rules? What's the oversight? We understand that the city doesn't have oversight, but we have a lot of, a lot of concerns from our residents. So I just wanna let you know as a council that the LaCo um, staff members did meet, did have a training with the cemetery board. Uh, members with their Board of Directors to be able to go over um, their functions, what they do. I have the PowerPoint. I'm gonna ask if I can share with you all, so you guys have that same information as well. Um, so there was a, there, there was, you know, there was a meeting that was held. I couldn't attend. Um, I wasn't able to attend on that day. But they did meet with the board. They did tell them that part of their bylaws does have, that they need to be holding public meetings, monthly open public meetings. And that now that the state has lifted the um, emergency, that they have to go back to be able to have uh, open public meetings. And they have to, they have to be able to have a location. It was my understanding that before they used to meet here in the city of Solidad and I know that staff has tried to reach out to them to see if they could continue to meet here. So that we are public does have information of when the meetings are and that they can come to directly meet with the representatives. Because those are the, the individuals that should be addressing a lot of these concerns that we're hearing. We're a partner in this, obviously, because it's in our community. But there is really strict bylaws, uh, regulatory provisions that they need to adhere to. Um, and so I think it's important that we as a council understand what those provisions are as well as we're, you know, talking to individuals and whatnot. So that didn't, that, that did happen. I asked our LaCo Commission staff if they can come and give a presentation to our council. So that way we're all clear in terms of what those regulatory provisions are, what were some of the conversations with some of those members? What were some of the strategic efforts that they implemented to be able to resolve some of the issues? Um, so I am hoping that um, we can have them here next month to do a presentation, to be able to provide. Um, and then there's an opportunity for us to ask any questions as well. So uh, it's gonna be important that we make sure that our public knows when they come here to provide the presentation so that they can hear the same information that. Is, is, you know, it's important for our community to know. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda and it's our council member um, praises. And so I'll start with Councilmember Cabrera.
Well, um, I wanna praise the uh, um, mainstream school band and she's dealer, which had a wonderful presentation. Um, and um, what was the salary? Was it thirteen? They did really good. Um, they got fourth place and we noticed that uh, the scores were really tied. So we were competing with big uh, schools and I believe this was the first time they competed. Uh, they were nervous, but uh, our children behaved really well. And just one more thing, that we have our district uh, concert now, so all of you are invited to that. Is gonna be like around eight, one hundred and eighty students or so, um, playing instruments and everything. Last year was. And I hope that this year will be the same.
I think, thank you. Thank you for that announcement too. Um, Councilmember Chavis?
You know, uh, for me, I just want to praise, I know it's a little early, but just praise all those students that made their decision on universities they're going to. And then also uh, all the, the students here, it's all that high that are graduating. So I, I know it's, it's still really early, but uh, it's coming up really quickly and uh, just wanted to praise all of them because of all the hard work. There's so many uh, talented students here, uh, such talented scholars, uh, you know, when he talks about uh, when uh, Councilmember Cabrera. Talks about the band members, uh, you know, we, we have poets here, we've got, we've got everything here in this community. Such a, such an awesome community and I think we've seen it. Uh, I know we highlight a lot our uh, our athletes here. Uh, but the reality is that we've got just awesome students across the board, so I just wanna congratulate all of them and their parents.
Thank you. Councilmember Correlo?
Um, yes, I just uh, wanna take the time to just give praises to our voters. Um, I really wanna thank them because for the school staff uh, and, and teacher housing. I think that at the end of the day, without their vote, within, without them uh, educating themselves and, and going out and voting, it wouldn't be possible. So just wanted to give them thanks.
Okay, thank you. Council, uh, Mayor Plata?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I like to uh, praise uh, our chief, chief police Watson and our police officers, our correctional officers. And peace officers, I don't know if you're aware, but this is the National uh, Week of Police Week uh, May fourteenth through the twentieth. Memorial uh, Peace Officer Memorial Day was May fifteenth. Um, and you know, uh. Uh, the profession of law enforcement uh, comes under uh, scrutiny, constantly when you see these uh, bad apples. Within the profession doing uh, uh, illegal things. Um, unfortunately, the large percent of ninety-nine point nine percent of those. Are doing the right thing. Um, so um, and then some of them, and unfortunately, um, that hasn't happened uh, here in the city of Solidad. Um, in the line of duty that I'm aware of, um, have given the ultimate sacrifice, they've given their life. And they've left families behind, they've left uh, children, uh, someone else to raise. So I wanna thank those that protect and serve and appreciate what they do. Thank you.
Th- thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor Plata, for that. And I think for next year, we'll put it on, make sure that we have like a list of resolutions. That we can make sure that we um, bring forth to the council. So just to make it easier, to make sure we don't miss some of those memorials. Especially for our, our public safety. Um, so I, I wanna, um, just on my end, I will, I wanna just, you know, praise also our N J R O T C students again. I mean, they're pretty amazing. They've been doing um, so great for the last several years. And a lot of these kids, you know, as we said, um, you know, they come from the families here in Solidad and just the support from the parents, support from the community. And just to see how enthusiastic they are and so amazing, you know, to be able to hear some of those stories of, for some of those, they were the first time they ever flew on a plane to Florida. Right? For the competition, to be able to have those experiences, I think for our community is really vital, right? Cause that can transform and change their lives to what they wanna do and where they wanna be. So I wanna give a shout out to them, give a shout out to Captain, to um, I, I know Captain Pete Gomez couldn't be here, but I know he's been really instrumental as well. And just doing all the support as well. So to him and Chief Peaches and uh, Chief Dunn as well. So I, and I wanna do a special shout out to, can, I'm gonna do something personal, so can I do that as, as uh, you know, just to like? And also, I just wanna give a shout out to my niece, uh, Vanessa Villarreal, who is from Solidad. And um, she is graduating from law school tomorrow and um, she went to U C Hastings, which now I think it's a different name of a law school. Um, but looking at just, you know, our, our young girls that we saw, um, you know, as part of the Rotary and looking at, you know, now the expansion of. You know, the different types of careers that typically they don't get into, right? And Stan is one of them, but also, uh, you know, being an attorney and really looking at that. Is there's more women, we need more women to support more women in these spaces and non-traditional kind of um, profession. So I just, you know, I wanna just make a shout out because I think that's a testament of what was said, the quality of the students' families that we have here in the city of Solidad. And how do we continue as elected officials in our roles, everything that we do, to really support and continue to support education, right? And support our students and be able to find pathways for our kids to have those opportunities to attend, you know, college, to attend the UCs, right? To graduate from law school, to graduate from these careers um, that are non-traditional. So with that, I just wanna say Vanessa, proud of you, congratulations and um, you know, you make Solidad proud and you make our family proud as well. So with that, I will um, turn it over now to future agenda items and I'll start with Councilmember um, Cabrera.
Uh, no, not a good sign.
Um, Councilmember Chavis?
Yeah, if we could get a just, uh, and it doesn't need to be an agenda item, we could just get an update on any of our street repairs that we're having. Uh, update on our sidewalk repairs, uh, just, just an update, just so we could take a look at anything that's coming up uh, forward. Um, if we, you know, it's always, things are always happening. And then uh, the agendas, you know, the one thing that was brought up today here at uh, council was the issue of the M S T. So I'm wondering if maybe we could bring uh, you know, that forward so that the community can have an opportunity to talk about the M S T plan. So that they know what is happening with M S T. I think that would be beneficial.
Um, yes, and in addition to that, I know that I'll make sure that they need also with the individuals that are here because the plan has been out there. I have to see what, what was removed and why. Um, and also with that too, there was Megan just on the M S T question. Um, our, our city staff was working with Gonzalez to be able to have more bus stops. So we had approved the better bus network that was gonna be more of a circulator to have, you know, more support to our seniors to be able to get to places faster. And they don't have to be waiting for a long time. So that's supposed to happen, but there's still been some, it's stalled and I'm not sure what the issue is, why. I mean, it's, it's, most of the city started their better bus network since December and Gonzalez and Solidad haven't. So I don't know what the issue has been on our side and I think it's on, on our Solidad side, on our city side. Okay, and. Councilwoman, oh, uh, Councilmember Cabrera?
No, I, I don't have a.
Um, yes, I had a couple of things. I'm not sure they need to be agenda, agendaized enough. Um, but I was just gonna ask uh, Councilmember Cabrera, since uh, you were speaking earlier about um, the uh. What's it called, your, your apartment? Yes, I was just uh, wondering if perhaps we need to add an alternate for that for you. For when you're not available to attend, um, you know, that might be something to consider at the council. Um, and then also, um, this is something that I brought up to it and I know he forwarded to, uh, to Megan. And I did uh, correspond with her a bit, but just uh, you know, again, going back unfortunately to mass shootings in, in our country. I believe that we have more mass shootings right now accumulated than we do days, unfortunately, in our calendar days to date. And so I had suggested, um, you know, maybe reviewing the, the workforce violence prevention. I know it, it was sent out, I think, to everyone, I believe, and um, I, you know, was told that we're gonna be uh, looking at it. And uh, putting something more specific to when it comes to our city and what you're doing in case of not. Um, what's called an active shooter kind of case and, and I hate to even talk about this, but I would hate even more to have regrets later. So, you know, really for the safety of our staff, um, and visitors touring of our facilities, I think it's important to implement that sooner than later.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor Plata?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm just looking for staff for a uh, uh, Megan, for a progress report on the status of the Meramonte Pro- Project. I know that um, with the transition from, from Brent to Ed to now you are in the chair. Uh, to find out, it appears as though it's been stalled. I know we have a deadline in December and I know there's some issues that needed to be mitigated. As far as like current zones and those type of things, um, where are we and in the process? And what do we need to do or what needs to be done? Uh, cause I don't want to swallow it because housing is, I mean, this is a critical need. And we've established that, not only for uh, for all our residents, so I wanna ensure that we don't miss this opportunity to let this one go by. So that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so my, just, I'm just some comments uh, for people agenda and I don't necessarily think they need to be agendaized. But one is um, the request to schedule a lighting ceremony uh, for the lights at Lost San Ana Park. Um, so I know that those have been put up. It's pretty exciting for our community and just so our community knows, this has been in the works for the past. How many years? Four, five? But I just wanna say our community, this came about because I know that the, the prior councils had approved the funding that we received on a one-time basis. Right? Through some of these wireless and kind of, of projects that we have going on. And the council then made a, a recommendation that that money be utilized for the lights out in the park. And so it's really amazing to be able to see that that's finally coming to fruition. So I wanna make sure that we take this opportunity as a community to celebrate that and really make a big deal out of it. Because this is one-time funding, that if not for that, we probably would not be able to do it. Um, so I think it's really important if we can schedule like a lighting ceremony and bring all the soccer teams and all the, you know, and invite our community would be really, really amazing. Cause we've seen where parents were out there at night with the big truck lights and, you know, kids were practicing at the evening time. So I think this says a lot for the investment in our, in our, in our community by the um, by the city, right? So I think that's important. So if we can schedule that, that would be really great. And then I know I talked about a community budget workshop. I just don't know how that's gonna happen, but I really wanna stress that again. How do we really have a true community workshop budget? Um, and then I um, measure as committee, I wanna make sure that that does not get unnoticed. So I wanna make sure we know what do we need to do, because that measure as committee was established as an oversight committee. To be able to provide to the council recommendations on the budget. I wanna make sure we don't have a budget process that we approve without any of that recommendation coming from that oversight, citizens oversight committee. We established last time that if people were, were not attending that after two, they were gonna be gone. So I wanna make sure that we know who didn't attend and, you know, what do we need to do to move forward? Because it's imperative that people attend and if people that we appointed are not going, then we as council need to make those determinations of you need to go. And we need to make sure that people are committed to coming because it's not fair. Um, and, and it's not right either. This is what the public approved to have a tax measure where there was an oversight committee, so I wanna make sure we stay as true to that. So I know it was stated that the council had to do a special, call a special committee. Can we know if the council needs to do that? Can the committee members themselves? Um, it's been hard to establish a forum, but I think the rules say that they have to have a forum and if they don't have a forum, what's the next step? So what can we do? So that can move forward. Um, and then the, my other comment, I did receive concerns in regards to the. I did receive concerns in regards to the traffic light on Front Street next to McDonald's and Shell's.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if there is a possibility that we get a sign showing that there is a right-hand turn only um on the freeway interest next to the light. I believe there's a sign already with some arrows, but it's on the ground and it's not, um people can't see it. So it's blocking. So we can check that out. And also I know the other complaint was that there was a lot of, sometimes they were out, right, that there was some concerns about that um those traffic lights.
I know I got complaints this past week, but I think it had to do with how turn and oh, the issue with, that's when I got the calls was because of that. Yeah, so I think it was off on that that first day after.
Um I was just gonna add, on the community budget workshop, um we'll do much better to that next year than um so we can figure out what, you know, how to engage people, not just having a workshop, but maybe doing pop-up events and other things to get feedback into the budget, not this year because of the timing, but now that I'm here, I'll I'll come up with a plan and report back and and can move forward. Um I did wanna mention, um we are gonna be having a Measure Y um meeting. We we haven't done that, so we are gonna have a special meeting on Monday. Um and we'll do our best to see what we can do about Measure S. It may, it may be a situation where um we have our um session next week, our budget study session next week. And then we might have to report between the study session and here when you vote on on that. But we'll, we'll do our best to get so you get the Measure S committee together.
Chair by me. And and also look at, I don't know, the stipulations of the of the uh participation in the committee. Um oftentimes that I've seen is that when two committees are too large, you tend to find that you're not able to get a forum because not everybody's involved. The the more stakeholders that we have involved that are are uh committed and uh to these groups tend to show up and those that are in a large group think they think, you know, it's not that big a thing if I don't show up. So that might be some for the council to to reconsider or reconsider
Yeah.
uh in the future uh when we uh for these committee.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And I think I I'll make a follow-up comment to that because I think that, I know I heard that comment as well. I think for us, it's just going back and we can come back and look at why people are not attending and, you know, who are we selecting that maybe doesn't have the time, right? And then we need to be honest and we need to change that. But I think just in kind of the the one that I heard for the measure, the one that we have nine Measure S, right, which is the one that we've had more problem, problems with. Um I know, you know, it went out to the voters and with the the language in the voter was, it's it's a general use tax. But there was gonna be for services for um animals for childcare, for recreation. So there was for different, oh, and for veterans, right, or for seniors, sorry, for seniors. So I also wanna make sure when we have the dialogue to come back, look at what strategic efforts we can take, but also making sure that those voices are heard because that's what voters approved. That's what I approved. I voted for it because it was gonna have, you know, it was gonna have the oversight committee and because we're gonna be true to spending dollars within those categories. So having the voices that represent those those categories is really important, but we do have to come back and look at it because people are not showing up and that's not good either. Okay, so with that, there is no further discussion. Then I adjourned this meeting at eight forty second.